Good evening, everyone.
Are live.
Good evening, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we're going to move to item B two, which is the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Tchotinio, Mawekma, Karken, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting of the Board of Education. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect, provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate, serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interests. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand. By clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine, you're accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins for the item. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the webpage using the word "English" for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available via Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Mr. Duffy, can we please have the roll call?
Yes, and I apologize about being late. I got confused on the closed session process for this evening. President Phillips?
Here.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Present.
Trustee Christian?
Present.
Trustee Reckler?
Evening, present.
Student trustees, the trustee, student trustee Emiliano?
Present.
Student trustee Liang?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to notify the public that board members are doing a hybrid this evening, so we are meeting at Michelle Obama Elementary School. Physically present are trustees Reckler, Christian, and myself, and trustees Gonzalez Hoi and Smith Folds are zooming in. We're going to move on to item B five, which is report ratification of closed session. The board recessed its closed session, and after this open session, we'll go back into closed session again and come back and report out after that. But the board did not adjourn closed session. Again, we recessed closed session. That's it. We're going to move on to item B six, which is agenda review and adoption. Board members? Is there anyone who would like to take an item off of the consent calendar? Okay, I would like to take which item is this? This is the testing item. I think it's C three. I would actually like to take that item off of the agenda. But are there any board members who have anything else that they would like to take off of the consent calendar?
Just to clarify, that's for discussion, correct? Or you're asking to remove it for another date?
I'm asking to remove it for another date. Okay. We're going to go to public comment. And is there any public comment on this item?
There are four hands raised.
Okay, please go to public comment.
The first one is Louise Ainsley. You may unmute.
Good evening. My name is Louise Ainsley, and I'm a West Contra Costa parent. I'm also an ER nurse in Alameda Health System, a safety net hospital system covering East Oakland, Alameda, and San Leandro. The COVID surge was devastating across these hospitals, and many staff members contracted COVID. However, when vaccinations started in December, it had a dramatic effect on COVID numbers and hospitalizations. The level of AHS staffs positive for COVID rose from two percent in December seventh and peaked at five point one percent as of February twenty-sixth, but has remained unchanged the last thirty days due to mass vaccinations. This is even working with recycled PPE, poor ventilation, lack of pepper filters, and lack of negative pressure rooms. Even in the highest-risk environments, vaccinations brought safety to the workforce. Now, all three AH hospitals have COVID numbers so low, staff are being sent home from work, and the CEO is visiting hospitals in person. We came through the storm to the other side. As California opens vaccinations to all in April, opening schools should be seated safe for both students and employees. I appreciate all the hard work that everyone from the West Contra Costa Board has done for the community and all the extremely hard work from all the teachers caring for our children right now. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jeanette Gay.
Hello, Board. My name is Jeanette Gay, and I'm a parent of two high school students in the district, both with IEPs. I am also a first-grade teacher in the district. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work in the past few weeks to allow students to have an in-person option. There was a few things I want to touch on regarding the TA that came out. Social-emotional small group Fridays from eleven to two has been removed from this new TA, and it should be added back, and it should be tended to, just like Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I want Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday schedule to accommodate the most students, and the choice between eight to ten AM or two to four PM intervention options should be available every day. There's also a CDC guidance with three foot, and the room should dictate the maximum number of students, not the TA. The old TA also did not have a requirement for two adults to be in the room for intervention or learning small groups. Why was that requirement added for the new TA? We can service more students if we have more adults taking on students instead of doubling up on teachers and staff. I'm in agreement with this TA and hope that the district approves it so that we can get back to in-person learning and prove to everyone that this can be done safely. I also urge the board to direct the district and five unions to return to the bargaining table. If not enough teachers volunteer to accommodate all the students who want to return, and also to return if changes like the ones I am suggesting should be made to allow for more flexibility for students and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more hand raised. Principal Scott. We, there we go. We have no hands raised. That ends public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, can I please have a motion to adopt this agenda minus item C three?
President Phillips, point of order?
Yes, sir.
You pulled C three completely off the agenda or just to discuss later on?
I pulled it off the agenda.
Okay, could we separate the vote, please?
We could. The last time I pulled something off the agenda, it was because I really didn't, we needed to have another conversation offline about it. So, please, I'm hinting. But yes, if you would like to do that, or make whatever motion you'd like to make.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we separate the vote from the consent, from the agenda, and pull in pulling item C three.
I second that motion.
Okay, so you want to have two motions? Are you trying to leave C three on the agenda is what you're trying to do?
That's right.
Okay, so your motion is to?
I could be more direct if you prefer that I make a motion.
Yeah, just be direct.
Okay, my motion is that we keep C three on the consent calendar to vote.
Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion to keep C three on the consent calendar for vote.
So you want to pass item C three on consent? Okay, I pull C three off of that calendar, which I have the right to do regardless of the motion. So I'm pulling item C three. So I'm just going to restate the motion then. So the motion is that we adopt the consent calendar minus item C three. Right, you just, that's, that's what you want? You want to leave everything on this consent besides C three?
So, so you just pulled it, so we will discuss it no matter what?
Right. But you want the other things to stay on consent?
Correct, so it would just be approving consent, correct? So there's no need for a motion because we could just approve the consent later?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Can we, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with item C three being pulled off of consent to be discussed later? Can I have a motion for that?
Sure, I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian?
Christian, yes.
Liang?
Liang, yes.
Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Phillips, no. Motion carries. All right, so we are now going to move on to item B seven, which is WCCUSD public comment. That is twenty minutes, a minute and thirty seconds apiece, and this is general public comment, not on anything that is on the agenda. So, folks, please begin raising your hands, because once we get to the comments, you, we're going to start. It'll be closed. So, Mr. Aurelio, do we have anyone who is ready to speak in public comment?
Yes, I believe Dr. World is doing the comment this evening.
I'm going to do them tonight, and I'm looking at the hands now. Looking at the last name, okay, we have, it looks like, oh, accelerated. Looks like fourteen. First commenter is Ray Well.
Hi, actually, it's my husband's name that's on there, but this is Kim Williams. And I just wanted to second what someone said earlier. I think the ideal time for our students to be in class is when they're most attentive, and I'm concerned that by two to four PM, that it just won't be a benefit to them. So I would second having it earlier in the morning, eight to ten, or ten to twelve. And then I also heard that it might be a possibility that my student, my daughter, could potentially end up at a different campus with a different teacher and a different set of students, and I would think she would benefit more from being with her teacher and also with the students in her class so that she has the opportunity to start developing relationships. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Selita Hunter. You may unmute.
Hello, Board. Maybe I was confused, but it was my desire to pull from the consent agenda item C one and C two. But I think something got confused, and I put my hand up, but then we went on to other comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. That's noted. We'll pull C one and C two.
Our next public speaker is Mariela Cuellar.
Good evening. My name is Mariela Cuellar, a community member, everyone. I am very disappointed because we didn't get any notice of this. I find out because my husband showed me a text, and and it's really sad because I am a parent of Richmond High School, but also I am an employee. And yesterday I went to look for the agenda, and I didn't see anything, so I thought there was, there was no meeting happening today. So I would like, as always, to have effective communication, so this way we we know what's going on. And I, I was at the meeting on Wednesday, and I heard about having a meeting on Friday, but I didn't know if it was this Friday or the following Friday. So I just would like for the community to have better communication, the district with us and everybody. So this way, we can be more informed, involved, and take action, because for me, this is really important to be informed, so I know what's going on as a parent, as a community member, and also as as an employee of the district. Thank you, and I appreciate everybody for being here.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Gabriella Micalletti.
Hello, trustees. I am increasingly concerned when I listen to these meetings and hear decisions being unilaterally made that really aren't in the spirit of the democratic ideals of a school board, and to begin this meeting talking about how schools are such a democratic place and to talk about really putting the needs of students first and not subverting them for particular groups just feels like lip service. And I wish I'd see all members of this board really embody that rather than just say it at the beginning as a cursory bit. Just saying at the beginning doesn't get you credit, right? Because if I were to just tell my students, oh, I care about you and your education, that doesn't change anything. I have to show them through my work, through what I do. So please actually embody the things you're saying at the beginning of this meeting rather than just saying them to pretend that that's what you're here for. And please, please, please listen to all the voices of this district and not just those with the greatest resources and who have the time to be the loudest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Jean Kincher. You may unmute.
Hello, I will piggyback on Gabby Micalletti's comment, and I would like to thank the board for pulling C three to discussion instead of dropping it completely off of the agenda. It's a very important discussion, and I'm glad to see that the board is united in wanting to discuss this, or most of the, majority of the board is united in wanting to discuss this item.
Our next public speaker is Kelly McLaren. You may unmute.
Hi, my name is Kelly McLaren. I have two kids in the district. They both go to Pinole Valley High. I am just hoping that the board will really make a smart decision tonight regarding getting the kids back in class as soon as we can. I know it's important for all students, not just my students, and I want to thank the board for all the hard work they've done so far to help make that happen, and I hope everybody has a good night. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Christina Baronian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Baronian. I'm a fourth-grade teacher here at Lincoln in Richmond. I'm also a Richmond resident. I wanted to echo what that parent said and a few moments ago about not even realizing there was a board meeting tonight. I got a text message as well. That's really troublesome to me. I can't imagine how tired y'all are at this point, because I'm exhausted. And I really appreciate the hard work that's being put in, especially by the few of you that seem to be sitting there standing up for some of the voices that aren't being heard the loudest throughout this process. I'd like to just thank Jamila Smith Folds specifically for the beautiful questions that have been asked throughout this process. Your dedication to understanding the community needs is invaluable. And as an exhausted teacher at eight fifteen on a Friday after I've worked all week, I just want to thank you for that. Also, can we please get some mental health supports and counselors? Because if we're trying to go back, we're going to need some extra help. Thank you so much.
Our next public speaker is Jessica Nansentruck.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jessica Nansentruck. I am a parent in the school district. I want to start off by saying too, I did not know about this meeting till last minute. I was happy to be at work in my dining room, and I saw a message in the Harding Slack, and I was like, there's a meeting. I think a lot of staff and parents are really sick of the lack of transparency. It's not that hard to blast out an email. It's not that hard to make things available to people digitally. It's twenty-twenty-one. We voted you guys in. Every district voted you guys in, and some of you, I feel like, are working really hard and trying to hear every voice, and I feel like some of you are not and have your own agendas. And all I'm going to say is it is a democratic process, and we do get to vote, so when time comes back around, know that we will vote. As you can hear my kids screaming in the back while I'm trying to work, while I'm trying to be on this meeting, and I'm trying to see what's going on. We're all stressed, then. We're all stressed out. We do appreciate all your hard work, but we need to know what you're doing. We need to be a part of the conversation, especially the teachers. Teachers need to be a part of the conversation as well. So I hope you vote yes, because this is the best it's going to get, I think, with two months to go, and I really want to see more in writing of what's happening for the fall. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Torni.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Good to see you, or I'm sorry, hear you all again. Time is a funny thing. What seems like forever is actually only a day, and what seems like a day has actually been a year. Why are we rushing and pushing people to put other people in uncomfortable circumstances, possibly dangerous for themselves or others? This spring MOU will help administrators and teachers just for a full fall opening. But forcing teachers who are not ready to come back full-time is a bullying tactic. Allow those who are willing to volunteer teaching in person and those who want to continue with distance learning to do so. We need to support teachers who are on Zoom while also teaching live students. This is not what they signed up for. I'm sure it was not in their job description. What's great is we have time on our hands. Hopefully, in a few years, this will be far behind us, and our children will have a different kind of strength and experience to grow from. I, for one, will not expect my children to get back into the classroom until the fall. I will not be taking up space that should be allotted for children whose needs are greater than my own. My kids will be okay. Patience is a virtue, and we are practicing it daily. The outcome will hopefully be a successful full-fall opening for all students. And thank you all for everything you have done for us. We really appreciate you.
Our next public speaker is Patricia Garretts. You may unmute.
Thank you. I can't believe you got my name right. Nobody ever gets it. Hello, thank you, everyone. I just want to voice my utmost support for this tentative agreement. I'm a teacher in the district, and I just, when we, teachers that I know got the the information in it, everybody kind of just went into like, go, how are we going to do it? How are we going to make this work? We're excited. We're ready to get back to the classroom if we're able to, and we also respect our colleagues who perhaps aren't in the same circumstances as we are. I also want to shout out to trustee Smith Folds. You really gave me life on Wednesday. It's been a struggle to be a public educator in California, just like it's been a struggle for everything, but in the last month or so, it's been a little bit. It's been rough, you know. So, thank you very much. Oh, also, piggybacking on somebody, mental health and support is going to be really important. We need counselors. We need people to support our kids because they've been through a lot as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nikki Hootman.
Hello. I'm a parent of a second grader and a fifth grader in the district, and I really want to commend everyone involved in this process for all of their hard work. I know it's been like a lot of long nights and really stressful time for all of you, so I thank you for that. I know the plan's not going to be ideal for everyone, or maybe not what anyone thinks is the perfect plan, but I think that the most important thing is that it's a start. And I feel like what we learn from a spring reopening, even if it's small, can help us successfully bring all students back in the fall. I did want to encourage the board to have a plan for what it will do if we don't have enough volunteer teachers. I do think it's really important that we get the state funding if we can. So I just, you know, hope you can work that out. I'm glad that the district is prioritizing our highest-need students while offering the opportunity for other students to return. If there's not enough space for everyone to return in the spring who wants to, I would like to request that at the elementary level, we really prioritize giving space to our youngest students. They're the group who have the greatest difficulty with the distance learning format, and they're also the ones I'm most concerned about being alone. And I also want to just encourage the district to continue to reach out to all parents, our underserved communities, everyone, not just to get feedback, but to inform so that everybody can be completely informed and show up. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Rachel Archibald.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Rachel Archibald. I'm the mother of a third grader in the district, and I really appreciate the district for everything that they've been able to give my daughter up until now. And I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this latest MOU. I think it's a good start. I think it's important to start getting kids back in the classroom and to start the process. I was asked to return to my office about six months ago, and just the process of starting that, even though it was only a few days a week, was really helpful to me, and I think I think starting a process is important, even if it's not full-time. My primary concern, however, is the fall. I want on August sixteenth, or whenever it is, I want us to be going back full-time in person, and I want there to be some consideration for aftercare. I think there are a lot of parents in the district, working parents in the district, who really need a full day of care, and I think that needs to be taken under consideration. Thanks so much for your time, and I appreciate everyone's efforts.
Our next public speaker is Katie Rohan.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. First, I just need to give a shout out to the student reps. I just keep thinking what I was doing in high school on a Friday night. This is not it, so thank you guys so much. Anyway, just to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, like, we really, and to what it was Rachel just said before, we need strong messaging about the fall. I know the message today that Superintendent Duffy put out said if COVID-nineteen conditions continue to trend if COVID-19 conditions continue to trend down and vaccinations continue to rise, we will be incomplete in-person programming in the fall. Again, this all depends on COVID-19 conditions. Well, vaccines are only going to go up. We don't know what COVID conditions will be, but we just, we need clarity. That is super, super vague. Berkeley Unified put out a really clear statement and I just urge you to do the same. I really don't know what the harm in doing this is. We all know things can change on a dime. This could be like something could happen we don't know about. And we could move backwards, but that's very unlikely. We need to know the conditions under which we would have to go hybrid. Otherwise, just please put out that strong messaging and writing about the fall. Like I said before, like for us working parents, what we do in the fall in terms of our careers depends on it. So I just urge you to put out a stronger statement than you did today. But thank you for everything to every single person on this panel. Thanks.
Astrid Rober. You may unmute.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, here I am. Yes. I just want to be a different voice in this whole discussion. I have two students in the school district and they have worked very hard, like many other students in distance learning all year. And I it would be too bad if they would be losing their teachers for the last five or six weeks that are left till summer break. If we count in the transition periods for teachers to go back. We are not out of this pandemic yet. And many students will probably not come back to school before break. And I hope that you plan accordingly so that our distance learners don't lose their teachers, which they have built a relationship with throughout the whole year. And I have to just say one more thing. I have had no problems getting information about this board meeting. Actually, I've had like three emails about that. So I'm not sure if people are not signed up for email info or anything. I've had three or four emails about this board meeting. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Susan Malloy.
Hi, thank you. I am the parent of a sixth grader and a ninth grader. Very grateful for all the hard work the board and drive in a place where there is an agreement ready to be voted. I'm asking you to vote yes on it tonight. I believe it provides the best way to bring students back to school who wish to return as safely as possible. I hope that the final agreement will allow the district to receive as much money as possible from the state by ensuring that there's capacity to bring back every student who wishes to return. I hope that the MOU does not restrict the number of students in the classroom beyond the three feet of required by health officials. And I hope that there are sufficient teachers and staff who volunteer to return to accommodate all the students who wish to return. But if there are not, I hope that the board will direct the district and the five unions to return with bargaining table. This has been a long and difficult year for everyone. My 14-year-old stayed up with me at midnight on that board meeting. He understood the possibility of a return to happiest I'd seen him in a year. Let him down. Please vote yes.
And I think we've lost Susan. The next public speaker is Melinda McCrery. You may unmute.
Hi, I just wanted to say I'm a parent in the district and I just wanted to say that I really have to say that the children should be back in the classroom. I totally understand that it's voluntary for the teachers. But I really hope and unfortunately, I can't even really tell it from the current MOU if there is going to be an option for in-person learning. So I really hope there is because this has changed so many times. But another thing I would really like to say is, you know, going to school at two o'clock is not necessarily the best thing for the kids or the parents. So I understand this is a really hard decision. And I thank you for the time that you're spending on this, but please give us an option to go back to school in the spring, please. Thank you.
Lucy Kenjura.
I guess I'm, yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Lucy. And I am staff with the district and I do want to thank everyone for all your hard work. I also want to thank especially Hyland in Richmond, all the secretaries. They're doing such a great job. But I also understand that everybody is talking about teachers. But I feel that I don't hear your supervisors or cafeteria staff. So I think we do need to talk about that in order to, I think your supervisors were really a big part of the school. And we do a lot with our kids and we support our kids and we deal a lot with now when they fall, we take care of them. We do. So I really like to know if there is a training or for Mr. Duffy or someone who's in charge to think about giving your supervisors or specific training. I've been taking that training that the district sent us over email. But there's nothing specifically for the supervisors or other staff besides teachers. That's, that's what I'm thinking that we do need to create a training specifically for your supervisors to support better and safe our kids. We should be taking CPR classes. Another training that it will be helpful for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Phillips. We have hit the 20 minutes. There are five hands that came up after we started, but they were not up when we started and we're at the 20 minutes.
Thank you very much, sir. There will be some other opportunities for people to speak in public comment this evening. We are not going to do item C because every item in C is pulled off of consent. That's C1, C2, and C3. Those items will be taken up after our singular action item. So we will now go on to D1, which is approved spring in-person intervention and instruction MOU with the bargaining units. Presentation please.
Thank you very much, President Phillips. Very happy to get to this item this evening. We were just here two nights ago approving direction and a plan to open our schools. Tonight before the board is a memorandum of understanding signed between the district and the five labor partners in the district. And we are asking for your approval to sign that. And I am going to go over the main points of the agreement and also try to clarify a couple of comments that I heard in the public comment. So let's dive into it. So just to review, and I heard our caller, we'll try to continue to make it clear that we will be fully in person for the 2122 school year. That is how we're opening. That's how we're operating. And we will continue to try to make that clear to the community and what it means. We also will be having a very robust 2021 this summer, summer support program that will also be in person. And we are hoping very much if we are ratified tonight and move through, we cannot only start contacting parents about the spring, but also the summer. We expect nearly 40 of our schools will be open this summer for some type of in-person support. So that brings us to the spring. So the spring proposal begins in-person school for students and families who want this option on April 19th. And it is a collaborative work of many stakeholders based on listening, listening to the science, listening to the community over the past months. And it's a bargain proposal, as I said, with our five labor partners, UTR, Teamsters, Adult Ed, SSA, and WCCAA. We finalized this very, very, very late into the evening, maybe act technically this morning with all of our partners. So I thank everybody who worked incredibly hard and diligently to share ideas and move us forward. We believe the proposal takes into account all of our facilities and operational capacity. It respects that individuals are in different places in their readiness to come back. And it focuses on high priority students while allowing options for all. So the plan has two blocks of time for students starting April 19th and ending June 8th. This is where I want to try to clarify as much as possible for the public. There is an intervention time for our highest need students before and after the core school day. So we will invite our highest need students for additional support either before the school day or after the school day. The second part of the plan is the school day time, the current core instructional day for any student who wants to come in during the current instructional day from 10 to 2 and high schools until 3. The class sizes will remain small, 10 to 15 students. We will still be doing asymptomatic testing. Vaccinations will be required for teachers. There will be a waiver process for those seeking exemptions. Let's go to our next slide. Here's a visual representation of what this in-person return looks like. So in the green, you will see intervention blocks. And in the blue in the middle is the core day, the academic day. This core day is Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We made a decision to not return on Thursdays because of everything that's happening with our community meal service, how much energy is being expended toward that, and also to make sure we're able to accomplish this well. In the PM blocks, if you're working or AM PM blocks, if you're working with students for academic intervention, we're also asking that those teachers on Thursday or Friday support that group of students with some social emotional activities, whether that's something that just builds the social and emotional connection between our students or something more formal. We're looking forward to supporting our students in that way. Let's go to our next slide. So let me talk specifically about the intervention model. So this takes place again either AM or PM. It's going to vary from site to site. So some sites will be doing eight to 10. Some sites will be doing two to four, depending on their staff and staffing. It will not be both. We believe that is just right now. We're not ready to have students in from eight to four, eight to five. So we'll do one intervention block. The intervention spaces are projected right now for our 5% of students who are most at need, which is about 1,400 students. And if we can serve more, we definitely will. Intervention's going to focus on academic intervention, as I said, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with social emotional support offered on the Thursday or Friday to the same group of students. And we're following the guidance in ABSB 86 about who we will serve. And that has all been documented in the district prioritization matrix to help us determine need. This is a slide we showed two days ago. And again, it outlines who we're targeting for the extra intervention time. Our youngest learners, historically underserved students, students who have not been accessing distance learning, students suffering from academic achievement, students with disabilities, social emotional needs, technology issues, for example. So that's how we'll prioritize the students. We'll start reaching out to them if this is approved next week and let them know what we can offer. Let's go to our next slide. So now let's talk about the core day. So this means we are going to open our schools from 10 to two or 10 to three, depending on elementary or secondary, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. All students we anticipate should be able to start on April 19th. That is our day. The school day time will be divided in two ways. So one will either be a teacher-led classroom with a second adult. So a teacher is coming in to teach in person. He or she is teaching the students who are there with him or her. And he or she is zooming out to the students who are at home. And that's why we're providing a second adult to help with that and help get that worked out while the teacher is doing these two things. Where the teacher is unavailable, there will be a second option, which is a supervised distance learning. So even if our teacher is not able to come in, students will be welcomed. They will have a qualified adult working with them, helping them get on their Zooms, allowing them to see their friends, connect with their school, see caring adults, get outside where they can and really be part of the school community, even though they will still be zooming to their teachers. At secondary, where students have a period by period schedule, they will go to period one. If the teacher is there, they will be with them. And if they go to period two and the teacher is not able to be there, the school would do the same thing. Provide an adult to supervise those students while they zoom into whatever their period two is. If we have any limited capacity, our highest need students will take the first available seats. We believe that we can, through this agreement, serve the families who do want to come in during this time. Go to our next slide. A few other notes. One thing that was very important to us is that students are provided a healthy snack. That could be a snack that's at the end of their intervention block. It could be a snack that's at the beginning of their core day, the end of their core day during their second intervention block or the afternoon intervention block. To do that, we're going to have to make some sacrifices. We have a tremendous central food distribution process. And so there are some non-WCCUSD community agencies that we do provide food to right now that we are going to have to reduce or potentially eliminate in order to free up some of our labor to distribute snacks to all 55 of our schools. All staff returning to in-person work to support in-person school will receive a $750 stipend for their work. And we will raise that by an additional $2,500 once we confirm we are eligible for AB 86. I know there's been a lot of consternation about the stipends and what we are paying. It has been very important to us to make sure we don't commit a sum of money that we cannot afford if for some reason we are not AB 86 eligible. We absolutely believe we will get there. And we have decided to be safe. We will start with the $750. Also, different from the plan we brought last week where it was only an afternoon program, we have added many, many, many staff by supporting the core day. We've added staff by having a second person supporting the core day when the teacher's there. And you'll see in our MOU, there's a number of other smaller costs through the agreement. And for that reason, we decided the first commitment should be the 750. We believe we can get there. We will get there. But this is how we've started. Next, we will ask for family confirmation and commitment for the Next, we will ask for family confirmation and commitment for the full length of the spring in-person program for planning consistency and safety purposes. So we are not going to have students join us anytime between April 19th and June 8th. That is just not something we can do. We don't have the capacity for that. So we are going to ask families to make that call if they want to be with us in person for those last seven, eight weeks. Fantastic. If they want to be home, because that's what they believe is right, that's also great. We just need to know one way or the other. Our next steps are to review, and we have reviewed it, but to continue to review it against the AB 86 model. We do believe we will meet the requirements for the AB 86 dollars, which is for us about $9 million, a little less because we're starting after April 1st. Our labor partners will hold their own ratification votes by their members over the coming days. Families will be contacted next week. Staff intent to return forms will be released late next week, maybe a little bit earlier. We'll do a final walkthrough of all sites. If you saw my community message today, I included a video of me walking through Grant Elementary School so that families, parents, community could see what our schools are looking like with some of the additional PPE, Plexiglas, hand sanitizer, et cetera. We will train staff and have a prep day Friday, April 16th, and schools reopen April 19th. Finally, just ask for your patience, grace, and flexibility all the way through this process. This has been arduous to get us to this point. There are many, many people with so many varied opinions. We believe we've done our best at this point to reach an agreement that works for everyone to get our schools open, to respect where people are, and move forward. So that is the summary of what we're proposing to the board this evening, and I am happy to take questions about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. Tonight, we're starting with Mr. Gonzalez for questions. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. I have eight questions, Mr. Duffy. My first one is for the non-WCCUSD food distribution locations. If those specific organizations or agencies organize their own pickups for the food centrally, can we still provide them with that food for the next couple of months?
I would say we will try our very best to do that. I need to go back and talk to our nutrition services team. I would like to be able to do that. I just really need to make sure we have enough people power to do it. If we can do that, we absolutely will.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. The next question I'm unsure is for you or Mr. Freeze, but it's around PPE and safety equipment. I want to just confirm that everything has been ordered and it's going to arrive into classrooms by April 16th.
Yes, I can bring Mr. Freeze on. I can also confirm everything's been ordered. He can too. There's a few things that are backordered, like certain cartridges for extra additional cartridges for certain hand sanitizer fixtures that we have. So there's some things that we're waiting to come in over the next week or two, but we have ordered everything and feel like we are very prepared. Mr. Freeze?
I think Superintendent Duffy, you answered that question that, yes, we are prepared and we are waiting on some materials to arrive, but we're confident they'll be here in time and distributed out to the school sites and classrooms will be supplied.
Thank you both for that. Next question, Mr. Duffy, is what is the timeline for the parent survey, a student survey of interest, as well as staff survey for volunteering?
So the parent survey, we want to get out as soon as we can. One thing for parents to note is because things may not line up perfectly, we may not be able to confirm for you as a parent if your teacher is coming back at the same time that you fill that survey out. So that's a caveat that we'll continue to work through with our families and get them that information as soon as we know. So our intent is next week to launch both of those surveys for staff and parents.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Next question, I'm sure it's for you or Mr. Aurelio, but what curriculum and or model are we adapting to support the cohorts and support our teachers?
I can take that. Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. So for elementary schools, the teachers are going to be utilizing their teacher's college and writer's workshop. They're used to the workshop model, which really adapts to small groups for literacy instruction. We've also purchased with donation funds and board approval, we want to purchase additional literacy intervention materials that are well suited for intervention. Content curriculum department leads have collaborated on identifying key standards for focus during both the open return and intervention block times. They've adapted their pacing guides blended with the targeted instruction, which will continue to scaffold and support student needs. Let me see what else I can add. The goal is to develop content level mastery and the skills that are transferable. And I do want to say, you know, we want to take an asset-based approach. The kids are going to come back to us where they are, and we need to make sure that things are allowing them to, for room for growth. We will be using data and assessments to make sure that our teachers are well-informed of where their students are so we can continue to support them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Aurelio. To continue on the academic piece, are we providing recommendations and our supports to teachers in order to pivot from the small group work or workshop model into this obviously socially-distanced work? Are we providing those tools to teachers before the 19th?
So we are going to be working with them. As you said, small group instruction is sort of a hallmark of the literacy work we do in our district, and it really has transferred into other content areas as well. I just want to also reiterate that our teachers are phenomenal at making lessons and planning for this type of work. So we definitely want to make sure we're trusting in our teachers as they get these students. And throughout the grade, small group instruction is going to allow our teachers to better focus on individual needs, differentiate. The smaller groups allow for that personal check-in, and that's really going to be the goal of that targeted intervention. When we're talking about our top 5% of our students, we know they need more and extra.
Thank you. My next one, for you, Mr. Wold. Have we already purchased and provided all the technology teachers and our classified staff might need to support the hubs and the cohorts, and will that be ready for the 16th?
Actually, Tracy can.
Sorry, I should have asked there, sorry.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. So, yes, so so far we have purchased and we have in our inventory about 500 webcams with tripods available for teachers. We also have small portable audio devices to amplify sound. And we're at the ready to purchase more, and I'm confident that we will have them in stock for the 16th, if not before. Additionally, staff has prepared videos, kind of how-to videos for teachers and one-pagers for how to set up that equipment. And it is what we've purchased is plug-and-play, so it doesn't require a lot of setup time prior.
Thank you very much, Ms. Logan. My next question is, are we providing some sort of curriculum and or training to staff on social emotional support and conflict resolution while holding social distance guidelines? Because obviously, after a year of our students being out, biggest concern is students returning, right? So are we providing training on conflict resolution, social emotional support?
Just even solves, I can take that. So yes, we are developing some training using our SCL curriculum. I want to remind folks, we do have SCL curriculum at every level that's focused on helping our students with the transition back to the classroom. So in addition, we hope to administer our SCL survey to students to get a better understanding of the students who will need additional support. In regards to conflict resolution, we will continue to implement restorative and healing-centered approaches as a response to discipline while emphasizing the importance of safety. We also have a number of mental health and social emotional climate partners to support this working capacity, such as the Seneca Family Agencies, the Bay Area Community Resources, and James Morehouse Project. I do want to add, we have many vacancies in the caseloads across the district. Part of that reason is teletherapy hasn't worked for all kids. So in opening our buildings, we do have space for our students to get additional supports in the mental health field.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. And I think you might have answered my last question, which is actually maybe not. So I'll just ask it, and you can just tell me if you did or if you can repeat this piece. Are we also providing training to staff on the 16th around disciplinary practices under such small conditions and how they should pivot from their regular use of restorative justice or things like that?
So let me just, yeah, let me start though. I want to, and I think we all have this assumption, which is we're assuming our kids want to be back and are going to be so excited to be back with us. And we're not going to have a need for that, right? Let's start with that assumption, like I don't want to start with the deficit model, but really focus on the fact that our kids are going to be so excited to be with us, so excited to see their peers, and really ready to learn. With that said, yeah, we have started to develop our discipline matrix through COVID revisions, and those are actually are being taken to numerous stakeholder groups for feedback. At our last safety meeting, we are asked to develop a plan to address COVID-specific plans, which have been dealt to work. We've been working on doing. Those are going to be brought to the safety committee for more information and to provide additional trainings and supports for schools. So it is definitely something we are developing and working on, getting the stakeholder feedback as needed. So it is definitely going to be in place. But I go back to, let's start with the positive mindset around our kids and trust that they're going to be really excited for school.
Thank you. And I did miss one question. So this is my last question. Are we also gathering input from students on what they would like to see on the Thursdays and Fridays?
That's an excellent question. I wonder if our student trustees have the answers next. I know they sit in our all-student congress. If not, that is definitely going to be on their next agenda item, which I believe next week, April 2nd, is their next all-student congress.
Okay, wonderful. And thank you. That was my last question, President Phillips.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Thank you so much. So first, I just want to ask a couple of clarifying questions. So the program is voluntary for teachers, correct?
I'm muted, sorry. Yes.
Okay, so we're not sending anybody back to the classroom against their will?
Correct.
And we're not sending students back to the classroom against their will?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear because we heard a few things that were a little thought, maybe people thought maybe something different. Would you be able to explain if a teacher goes back, but children, students decide to stay at home for distance learning, what they might expect?
Yes, so they would expect that. Well, let me start with the students at home, maybe, because I'm not sure they. So the students at home who are not coming into the class.
Yeah, the question was, there was like some feeling that perhaps there was going to be like a separation of teacher to student, or there was going to be a disruption.
Oh, yes. So during the core day, the goal is to not change schedules and not separate any students from their teachers. So this, the idea that everybody's going to switch around, we are not doing that. We're not making big switches. Now, in the intervention blocks after school, if a teacher wants to come and work with some high-need students who may not be his or her students, that's a different situation, and we welcome that. But for the core day, if a teacher has been working with the same set of students all year, that's the set of students that teacher would work with when they come into school during the core day, or those students come into school during the core day.
Okay, so if your child decides to stay home at distance learning?
They will, they will access their teacher through the webcams that Ms. Logan was just talking about.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. Just heard a few things that sounded like people were a little confused.
Who feel also, and we know there are many parents who feel like they're not ready, or maybe they've settled into a routine and want to finish out the last seven weeks at home in their routine. Please do. We want to make sure you have access to your classroom. We would say, of course, there'll probably be a few kinks to work out, but no schedules will be changed.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. All right, I'm going to go to the memorandum of understanding document and just ask a few things about it. So the first thing that I would like to just point out is that we have this preamble part that goes until page five, and it seems to me there might just be a few little things that might not line up throughout the rest of the document, and one of them is just about the amount of distance, social distance. And so we have a couple of places where the six foot is crossed out, but yet on page 13 back in the actual document, we've got we've got that we are maintaining six feet. So just to point that out and clarify that piece.
Yes, so we worked very, very hard and fast from the direction given to us Wednesday night. And I do know, I think there are a couple bits in the preamble, as you said, that don't align, and so we acknowledge that. So let me correct that, which is we are going six feet, we're committing to six feet. That's what we're doing for this spring. That was a compromise to make folks feel safe. We're going to stay at the six feet for this spring. The second part, I think you asked about the red and orange.
Correct. Yeah, I was going to just get to that if you would be able to clarify that.
Yeah, so that also, I think that language is a little bit antiquated now. That says we anticipate red for, or you could read it. I actually, I'm looking at you, so I'm not looking at that.
I can read it. I got it.
Go ahead.
It's a contract plus the county is anticipated to remain within the red tier for at least the next six weeks, if not longer into the summer. And my question was just, are we absolutely sure?
No, we're trending faster than that. So there's a chance we might be in orange by April 19th, and that actually in the actual MOU has some implications for testing cadences. So we very much hope to be in the orange, and we hope we trend that quickly. So again, I think that preamble language, which we didn't work on as extensively to get here tonight, is a little antiquated.
Okay, great. Thanks. I just want to make sure that we're clear with this since we're, you know, we've had numerous changes. The other thing that I wanted to touch on in the preamble is on page two, and it's about kids and dismissal from in-person attendance for not wearing masks. And while I realize this is very serious, I just hope that we'll give kids grace and we're teaching them and, you know, there's a process that's equitable and fair.
Yes.
Have you thought about that at all?
In terms of mask kind of discipline, could you say that one more time?
Yeah, I mean, there's, it seems like there's pretty strong language, like if you don't, you know, if you don't wear your mask, dismissal for in-person attendance for students. You know, and I'm just hoping we'll be thoughtful about that.
Yes, we will. We do not aim to be punitive in any way. This is like, hey, pull up your mask, bring it over your nose. You'll even, you even see in the video that I did today, my mask keeps falling below my nose. So, you know, there's constant reminders to pick that up, and I think we're all going to have to be doing that to each other.
Okay, great. The other question I have is around, if you could tell us about the hiring of all the paraprofessionals. And I know this is a part of SB 86. So if you could describe that, but also how we're going to stay financially sound, because we got into this huge hole and part of it was position control. And so if you could explain the law, what we intend to do and how we intend to monitor. what we intend to do and how we intend to monitor this and keep ourselves solvent.
Sure. And I'll be happy to turn the financial mechanisms over to Dr. Wold. We did say, first and foremost, we want to offer to every employee this opportunity. And we're very hopeful they will be with us, supporting our students if they feel comfortable. And if we do not have enough staff, we have said that we would look to rehire some of our laid-off classified employees. And we're also thinking about that proactively. And some of our laid-off paraprofessionals, because there is some language in SB eighty-six, which is the coming money for the fall, that asks us to put aside a set of dollars for paraprofessional support. So we're thinking about how we might ready that. We do know that's one-time money, though. So we'd have to be very clear with the board about the positions and hire date and what we can support long term. With that, I would just ask Dr. Wold maybe to clarify any of the kind of financial mechanisms there.
So indeed, with both AB and SB eighty-six, there is a provision that we do hire additional paraprofessionals, which aligns directly with the model that we're trying to build to have that additional support for students. What we anticipate doing because of the one-time nature of the funding, we're going to build that and tie it with the S R two, so that when we do bring back positions, we will do so with the clear understanding that we're bringing them back with one-year or two-year money. With the anticipation that the state will start funding better, we won't have to make any notion, but it'll be clearly defined in the return to work. That that position's funding could expire in a couple of years, which would require the board at that time to do a resolution to reduce service. We are certainly hoping that, one, they're going to fill a need that we want to serve our students. And two, that the state will start adding that funding ongoing. But we will make it clear in the hiring process that those positions could have an expiration date. We are very excited, though, to have additional support in many areas that we've lost because of cuts in the past.
Okay, for sure. But, you know, funding is, today is not, tomorrow is not yesterday. So
Correct.
It's something we have to watch, you know, weekly, basically. Okay, so I have two other questions and then I am done. The first one is, is that we are not yet SB eighty-six compliant because of the voluntary nature. What are the levers you intend to pull if it looks like we're not, we have more students than staff? Or, you know, like, what are the levers you intend to pull to get us to ensure we receive the funding?
We're going to pull all the levers. We believe first that there's an excitement to get back and working with kids. And so we're going to allow that natural excitement and that connection to get back. I heard a story of a kindergarten teacher was thinking about the fact that April nineteenth is going to be the first day of school for kindergarteners. And I remember taking my own daughter to school, how big of a deal that was, and started making me think, you know, as soon as your mind gets that way, it gets really, really exciting. So I think that's the first step. Because of SB eighty-six and the potential that we can bring back some of those workers that we lost due to finances, that brings additional resources into creating opportunities. If we have to look at our partners, we have our after-school partners and others that can continue to add on top of that. I believe that you're going to see each and every day more and more enthusiasm. We understand there's a lot of trust issues that need to be addressed. There's a lot of fear. There's a lot of different anxieties. But we're going to pull every lever. We're going to continue to work extremely collaborative with all of our bargaining units and find each and every possible scenario and solution to help support their members to support this model.
Okay, thank you. And then would we, and once again, we are not serving lunch.
We will have a shelf-stable, healthy meal snack that will be brought in. We're actually trying to up the quality, working with nutrition services. It won't be the perfect hot meal, but it's going to be a very desirable, high, healthy snack slash meal that will have shelf-stable in every school.
Okay.
And to plug that we are making thousands of organic boxes every week with a lot of incredibly wonderful, healthy ingredients. So we do have a lot of partnerships to help us get good snacks.
Oh, yeah. No, it's terrific. It's just now we're starting to kick back up and we need our kitchen space back. And then how do we support the whole community? You know, those, that's, those are challenges. Well, that's for, I think, a different time. Would you be able to put this page five, this conceptual student schedule back up one more time, just so we could walk through it once more?
Sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Arilio, are you able to put that back up? If not, I can.
Yeah, sorry about that. Which slide number?
It's number five, I believe. It's the little.
Can you see it now? Oh, sorry. I actually hit the share button now.
Yeah, and I just want to walk through this one more times so that just people can see it one more time. So these morning blocks, eight to ten, these are for tier two and three students, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's the same thing in the afternoon, two to four, those are for tier two and three students?
Yes.
And then who attends the two to four Thursday, Friday purple blocks?
Well, we're hoping that for the PM intervention, that it may in fact be the same cohort of students. So that it's not just one-offs on Thursdays or Fridays. So that's, that's the initial concept that you would, you would have a group of students who you're working with for academic intervention, but doing some social, emotional work with one of those days. But we may also, or I should say, and use that time to support other types of social, emotional activities where a teacher might want to do something specific with a group of kids or another adult.
So is it, are you expecting the kids that went, that go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday in the, in the two to four to continue the Thursday, Friday?
To continue, yes, we are for Thursday or one day, we said Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so if you go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, two to four, you may choose to come again either Thursday or Friday?
Yes.
And if you are in the eight to ten block, you only go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? You don't go on the Thursday or the Friday?
I will admittedly share that that is something we still need to work through. Whether that group ends up having one afternoon time potentially. We were trying to protect Thursday's meal service and everything that's going on Thursday morning and the Friday prep. So that is a piece we, we're going to need to continue to work out to see how we do that. We definitely want to cohort the students. We definitely want to make sure they get the Monday to Wednesday. And then we want to figure out how we can give them a little bit more on the Thursday or Friday. But we also sort of want to name that any other kind of special things we want to do in support and service of our students. We'd really try to use that Thursday and Friday time.
Okay, and then these little turquoise blocks, the ten to three, this is for any student that's tier one or any student that wants to come, correct?
It can be, it can be both. We had originally seen it as part of the tier two, three. But yes, more broadly, this would be a time for a wider set of social, emotional activities.
Okay, got it. So if you are a tier two or two, three, just like I asked on Wednesday, you could go eight until three or ten until four.
Correct.
Okay, got it. And then on Thursday and Friday, these community meal service prep and race and equity training and staff meetings. These do not apply to students. This is just blocks of what's going on.
Apply to students. I think what we're trying to show, what we are trying to show there is why we protected that time. So we've made a really strong commitment to race and equity training across our system this year. And that takes place three Fridays a month from eleven to twelve thirty. And it's an investment in the growth of our people and our organization. And it was something we wanted to protect so that our work can continue.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
People don't think that they're coming in for race and equity training because I might show up for that. And then this is basic for elementary and secondary? Or will you publish something that is slightly different for the different models?
We'll publish, you know, as we get closer, we'll publish something more specific. Especially secondary looks a bit different because of the change of periods that secondary students have. Yes, this is for purposes of kind of giving a broad overview tonight. But even, you know, we're moving so fast, even talking through this, you know, I can see some of the changes that we need to make. And then we'll have a different sort of graphic that goes home to families, elementary, middle, high.
Then let me just add in that it's really important. It's a range because our schools already have different schedules built within. And this is genuinely meant to be individualized to the school and the staff that are at that school and the students they're serving. So it's not going to be a singular, this is the model for all fifty-three sites. In fact, it shouldn't be. It's going to be defined by each of the sites and the needs. So you'll see different representations coming from each site as they get into the model. And we think that's very important, that that community works together.
Okay, but generally.
Yes, this is the.
Okay. Okay, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mrs. Smith-Walt.
Thank you very much. How long do you, how long are you going to get parents to decide if they want to come back or not and take that spot? Our highest need parents, how long are you going to give them to make that decision?
We have not set, as of this meeting, we haven't set that end date. We want to try to, but I will say we want to try to give as long of a runway as we can. So we also know that we do have, we have next week of school. Then we have spring break. Then we have one week and then we return. So, you know, we are probably looking to get the staff stuff, the staff return back April seventh. That's what's in this agreement. So we would try to do the students, if we can, by about the same time. But we know our parents may just need a little while longer. And some of them may really want to know if their teacher's coming back or not. So we may have to extend it a little bit more.
Do you have a number of ways that you plan on getting in contact with individual parents of our neediest students? And what are those plans? Is it email, telephone, knocking on the door? What are all the steps that you're going to ensure that you did your due diligence to make sure that these children have the opportunity to come back to campus first?
That's a great question. So we're going to do it both from the central office. So we'll go from our central tier with all our communication channels. And then we'll go from the sites. And we will make sure every site is able to let us know who they didn't hear from. And we actually have a model from our attendance team where when we don't hear from students in any way, we sort of have a second tier and a third tier where we get after it. And we'll use that also. So in case there's just parents who are not responding at all, we can use that same system that we use around attendance.
And are you willing to videotape all the schools that are going to be used, walk through and share those videos?
I don't think I can video all fifty-five schools. But I'm happy to try to get more video footage in other places, like a high school or a middle school, so we can see all the different levels.
You or some of the staff, can you or some of the staff videotape all the schools as a walkthrough and then post those up? So it can add to the trust factor, that people can see that the schools are ready.
We can do our best.
And do you have a time when that, we're going to be able to see the facilities list and see those classes that are ready? Do you have a time when that's going to be public or published to the public?
I can answer that question. So we've been working on compiling those documents. It will post up on the website next week, early next week.
And can you answer, Mr. Freeze, can you tell me what PPE is back order, back ordered and when you think it's going to be here?
So the information I've received from the warehouse, the items that we have received limited quantity on our hand sanitizers for our wall dispensers. We're also waiting on some cloth, if you will, terry cloth type towels in order to clean materials. So those are some of the items we're waiting on currently.
Thank you. And Superintendent Duffy, the blue core, the turquoise middle section of the day, the core instructional day, that is for high-need students first, correct?
It is open to all. We are going to invite all students. And if we do not, for some reason, have enough space, then we will offer that to our highest need students first.
Okay, so it's going to be offered to highest need students first. Well, it's going to be offered to everybody. And then you're going to buy based on the amount of space and capacity you have. You're going to prioritize those highest need students first to make sure that they fill those spots, correct?
Yes, with the goal of making sure everybody who wants to come back has a spot.
And you said that, can you give me an example of the social, emotional activities?
I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Wold. He worked extensively on this part of the MOU. And I think has some good ideas about how that part will work.
So this, this has been one of the areas that it's the hardest to explain. But the goal of it is that we know that we want, as much as academic is essential. There's been a lot of loss of just that direct connection that the students have. And so in those interventions, that's very intensive. Those teachers are going to be very dialed in with that small group. The idea was on that Thursday or Friday, they would break away from it while they still might be doing some intervention work. It might be the math teacher says, you know what, let's learn chess today. Or let's get outside and do a little activity that has to do a math piece to try to keep that other connection going. Keep the other pieces for the students there, that it's not just learning. It's about, we've got to be connected. It also creates the opportunities as our teachers were talking about us. There's so many creative ideas that they haven't even told us yet, that they're going to have the opportunity to open up some different avenues. It might be a one-off sometimes that a school goes, you know what, this week, we want to do this. And we want to do it on that Thursday afternoon. We don't have a space in the current schedule to do that. So it's going to be site-specific. If you were to ask me to give you ten examples, I would probably need to call ten teachers and say, what's yours, what's yours, what's yours? But each of them is the opportunity to get kids to be in a different space than just learning. And if you're in that tier three group, learning's a struggle for you. It frustrates you sometimes. You're not doing well. To have a positive experience with that same teacher that you sometimes have frustration with changes the whole outlook on education. And that's part of what the goal of having that built in is.
Are you directing what hubs will look like or is this a site decision?
We believe the sites are best fit to design what's going to work best for their students on their campus with their teachers.
Does the new TA say five percent, you're aiming for five percent, or does it say most neediest?
It's, I believe it says most neediest.
Okay, so the goal for this entire program is the most neediest, not just the five percent, okay? And you said that you're working from a six feet, is that six feet from student to student and also student to adult?
Yes.
Okay. Can you please tell me how much time it takes to assess a group of ten kids on reading and math?
Um, I don't have a clear answer for that. I think it's, and what tool that you're using. I think we have some quicks, like some quick assessments, and we have some longer ones. Um, maybe Mr. Rilio wants to.
Yeah, I was just going to add on about that. We do have our assessments that are like star reading and star math that are, that our students are used to taking their quick, they're diagnostic in nature. We also have the ability for our teachers to drill down, especially with literacy, uh, and do more individual-based assessments. And of course, in person will allow them to do that.
And you, you guys do understand, here's, you do understand the length of time that it takes for teachers, once they find out where their students are, that teachers then have to, uh, have differentiated instruction, correct? That is understood by everyone?
Yes.
Okay. You may not want to be punitive with wearing masks, but you do have to ensure that there is safety for your staff and your teachers. How do you ensure that safety?
So all individuals that are going to participate, this are going to have to sign very specific, um, permissions and attestations. One, they're going to have to be doing, um, assessments, health screening every day to make sure that they've done that and attested to it. Masks are going to be required. While there will be grace if it falls off for a moment to say, put your mask back up. But if it's continually not putting people in an unsafe environment, that would be a violation. We have to maintain safety. We will have mask expectations. We will have social distance expectations. We will ensure that people stay in that lane. We did it in the grocery stores. It clearly folks can do it and we will make sure that that's the opening piece. That's why the sixteenth, we're going to talk about those expectations with the staff. That'll be the first thing they do when they come back on the nineteenth, is talk expectations and we'll put them out in writing as well.
And how many counselors are you planning to bring back? You said you're bringing back some counselors and a pair of professionals? How many do you plan to bring back?
We haven't determined that. If you're, you're talking specifically about folks who are laid off, who are on the rehire list. That's who we've agreed to bring back. I think that's.
Well, we've, we've rescinded those. I think counselors are just like all of our educators. We're hoping that they volunteer and they provide services. And the anticipation was in the MOU that there would be opportunities for them to work with students individually and in groups. So our, our hope is that a hundred percent of them choose and are able to be back to support students. As we've said multiple times though, if there's someone that has a personal reason or a medical reason that they can't come back yet, we understand that too. But the hope and the budget expectation is that a hundred percent of them come.
And you said that you're going to have, if a teacher is inside the classroom, she, she or he will be there with another adult, correct?
Yes.
And can you give me examples of who would be inside these rooms if there were no teachers there? Just name some, for example, it would be who? Would it be your CSO? Would it be your, who are you looking for to be in those rooms?
In the non-teacher rooms?
Yes.
Yes, um, so, uh, that could be, um, it could be a after-school provider who is leading, uh, one of those rooms. It could be a substitute teacher who currently works with the school who we've called in. Um, Dr. Walt, do you want to give me some other examples of that could be?
That there are, there are certificated educators that have other assignments. The, the reality is we don't expect a hundred percent of our employees are able and ready to come back. We also don't expect a hundred percent of our students will come back. We do know that there's quite a few different classifications of employees, not just the classroom teachers. And when we get those that are in a position to come, they will be able to. But there's also a sizable percentage that have not been able to get their critical spouse or someone else immunized. And those things have to happen too. So we'll just go down multiple pieces. We have prep teachers that if they volunteer, we can move them into one of these pieces. We have special ed teachers that are resource specialists. We have other itinerant staff that may want to be part of this.
So those people that you just said, because you said specialty teachers. So there, they would be a teacher in the classroom, correct? So that means that two people would be in there with them because they're a specialist teacher, correct? And then you said substitute teacher. So a substitute teacher is, what we, that's a teacher. So then another person, so is every room going to have two people in it or is every room only going to have one? If you're employed as a teacher with the district?
I think the different, the distinction we're drawing is if you are teaching students in person and zooming home to other students who are in your class, so you're doing this kind of double duty. Um, you get an extra adult. Um, if you are just supervising students who are doing distance learning, then you are a single adult.
Okay, and is it a snack or a meal that you're offering?
We would call it a snack.
Okay, and then I asked for examples of that. And then the vendors, can partners or vendors request the air monitoring devices also? Or only teachers able to request that?
I don't think we were specific to that in this MOU, um, so we could look at it. I don't see why not. Uh, but it's, it's something we didn't outline specifically here.
And when you negotiated this current TA, it lasted to how long in the evening or the morning?
Well, I know last night, I think we tried to sign everything around midnight, one AM, somewhere there.
Is it fair to say that everyone may not have been at their freshest?
Um, I think everybody may not have been at their freshest this entire year, I would say.
Well, especially last night. Like, I'm speaking to last night or this morning. Is it fair to say that everyone may not have been at their freshest at the end of this negotiation round? Is that fair to say?
Um, potentially.
Okay, with that being said, that everyone may not have been at their freshest, is it, is it possible, possible? Is it possible that there was some misunderstanding among everyone in the room? Some of the language, misunderstanding around some of the language in this.
I don't feel that way. I feel like we worked hard, people.
Heard things contrary.
Um, I have heard, um, what I have heard is both positive and negative feedback about different parts of this. Some people are very happy about certain things. Other people are not so happy about certain things in this agreement.
Thank you. Could you walk me through what a middle school student, let's go with middle school first. I have just a couple more questions. Middle school student comes to campus, they are now in the blue on your columns, they're in the blue. So they come to campus, ten o'clock, walk me through what a middle school student would do.
Oh, let's assume a middle school student has a four, four-period day. Most of our secondary students have been in block schedules this year. So their schedule is going to really be dependent on whether their teacher is there or not. So let's assume for this student, their teacher is there for first period. They're going to go to that teacher's classroom. They're going to have instruction with that teacher. Uh, while the teacher's zooming out to the students who are not there. Now it's second period. That student's teacher for second period is not there. That student's teacher is at home. So the school is going to provide a space for that student to do his or her distance learning while supervised. So that may be a classroom. So you're going to go over here, get on your, get online for second period. Could be, you know, any other space that the, the school site deems good for that. And then on to period three. And so it sort of splits off. If your teacher's there, you're going to that room. If your teacher's not there, you are going to supervise distance learning.
Are you, are you going back to the same space? Let's say second period, your teacher was not there, you go to classroom C three. Fourth period, your teacher is not there. Do you go back to classroom C three where other people have been in it? Or do you have a designated classroom for fourth period students who don't have a teacher in the room?
That's a good question. That's a very good question. We haven't, um, finalized that. Think the more we can keep common spaces together, the more we can keep cohorts together, the better. We are through CDPH guidelines at secondary allowed to have, um, some cohort mixing. There are some, uh, cleaning requirements that we have to follow. Uh, but I think we haven't answered that. I think our guidance is to try to keep stability where we can. Um, and the schools are going to have to see which kids and how many and how to build that schedule.
Okay, but you are, you are acknowledging that that may take a extra staff to clean if we're using the same room. When a period is not being used, that that room may have to be cleaned. If that's the only room that's being used, correct?
It may need to shift some of our cleaning responsibilities.
Okay. And that would be the same for high school?
Yes.
And if we don't have a PE teacher, if we don't have a PE teacher for middle school or high school, but they have one of those classes, they would go into the separate room and they would zoom their PE like they do from home, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that PE would be done in the classroom or outside? Because at home is done in their bedrooms or living rooms or wherever. But in this situation, would it be done outside or would it be done inside a room?
Good question. Have not answered that.
And I have that same question for music. If they have a, if the music teacher shows up and that's the same question for music. And it would be the same question for dance.
If they're present, if the, the teacher's present, we're trying to do at every, as much as we can outside. That's the goal.
And if the teacher's not present, they would, if the teacher's, I guess it's a double question. If the teacher's not present, then you have to decide where they're going to do those activities.
Correct.
Okay.
And we'd leave that up to the school to figure that out.
The school would figure that out. Okay, and then let me ask one question on page twelve. It says, page twelve of the TA number six. It says, secondary students may be grouped by content area. Explain that, please? Let me give you a minute to find it.
That under, um, let me grab it, sorry.
It is under number ten, to provide additional support to students in order to better access distance learning during the district core academic time. The district may offer, and then we go down to number six, number two, secondary students may be grouped by their content area. Can you give me a little bit expla, more explanation about that?
I think what it's just, what it's, what it's trying to say there is that the secondary students would follow a, and Dr. Walt can correct me, a content-based schedule. So if you have, like I was explaining in the period one, like if period one is math, um, you're going to be with your group doing math. Um, I think.
With your, would you be with your group based on grades or based on like ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade? Or based on biology, chemistry? Because you know, in, in high school, you can have multiple age children taking a certain class. Like I have, I have a fifteen-year-old, but she's taken statistics and statistics is usually taken by other children. So does that, is my question clear to you?
I, I think. Go ahead.
I was going to say, I, the starting point is stable cohorts. So the goal is to, once we have, who are the kids that are coming in, what is their primary need? The starting point is stable cohorts. We want to keep going back to, each site is going to have a different configuration of students with a different configuration of needs. They'll then define that best model for what that cohort should look like. It could be cross-grades, it could be cross-subjects, it could be several different varieties. We can't give you a definitive answer. Well, at Hercules, it's going to be this and this, because it might be very different and all. But the concept is we start with stable cohorts, find the best focused support for them and let the site work with that parameter.
So that's a site I L T type of decision that's.
Yes, yes, we believe it's most appropriate. The teachers and the folks that know the kids are making the right decisions for each student.
Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Some great questions.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Christian.
Okay, uh, thank you, President Phillips. Uh, I just wanted to just touch on just a few areas. Um, you know, going back to the, on, on, on the paper, uh, number thirteen, actually dealing with location, buildings, safety, ventilation and, and so forth. So, uh, is all our ventilations are working at the school size or are they cleaned out? Or are they, you know, working where the, the air is flowing through, uh?
And I'm happy to have, uh, Mr. Freeze give more detail. But the study we did of all of our classrooms and the rating system that we had for all of our classrooms was specific to ventilation and airflow. Um, so we feel very confident about the quality of ventilation and airflow, especially with a number of the mitigation strategies that we have implemented, uh, including the filters, et cetera. So we, we feel very good about it. We know that there are some old classrooms. We know that there are some classrooms that don't have windows. Uh, we know that. Um, and we know that makes folks nervous. We'll continue to work with those very specific teachers or schools that have some of those, um, older facilities. But right now, through our walkthroughs, uh, we believe every, every classroom has strong enough ventilation and airflow.
Okay, and that's correct. And just to add. Uh, go ahead.
I was going to say, just to add that our crews have been through checking all the systems, make sure they're up and operating and the filters have been changed. Uh, we do have a couple of schools to finish, mainly in our, our high schools, but they are in the schedule to be completed, uh, next week or the week following that.
Okay, and then the, uh, that's what it goes back, you know, to, um, uh, discipline or actually saying, no, following, you know, the rules. You know, COVID, like I say, you know, before COVID is real, COVID has not left us, you know, and then there's policy, you know, things that we all have to follow. And, um, um, so how, I mean, it, would, would people have, uh, information that would go home? Or, I mean, for the parents and everybody to be able to understand, these are the rules, this is, you know, for the safety of everybody?
Yes, we are going to have a very clear progressive matrix that'll explain masking, it'll explain the protocols. We're going to have all of the different safety pieces built in. And we will be putting together several documents that will go home with each student. We're working on an electronic collection signature place so that we can get that gathered back quickly. But the answer is yes, we're also working on creating a place that you can find everything on our website too. So, oh, I forgot, I need to see that again. It's right there. So yes, our operations team is starting that work. Well, they've been working on it for quite a while. But now that we have a model that we are going to hopefully implement, they can start finalizing all those pieces.
Okay, and, um, and the other question I want to go back to, um, you know, far as manning the classroom. Um, um, the, uh, the CSOs, uh, so you will have other people outside would, would do that because the CSOs will have to maintain the safety of the school and making sure that the school is safe.
Correct. So nobody who has another scope of work, um, will be asked to give up that scope of work to cover a class. And a CSO is a good example of that because we do want to make sure, you know, our kids get some outside time. When they're transitioning, they get supervised. So we need the CSOs doing their important work. Um, and you know, being inside of our building, making sure everybody's taken care of, things are running safely. Um, so we do need our, our, our CSOs for that.
Okay, and, uh, that's all the question I have for now.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Sami Lianna.
Um, I have a couple of questions. So earlier you mentioned that in order to reach out to parents um, regarding the MOU and whether or not they want to participate in the spring intervention program, you're going to use the same methods, um, that you've been using for attendance. However, over the past couple of meetings, it's become, uh, it's been mentioned multiple times that there are families who have disappeared. Um, and you have not been able to contact. So how do you plan to reach out to those families who have disappeared? And are there any additional actions that are going to be, um, put into place to inform those students and families?
Sure, just to correct that though, we don't believe that families have just disappeared, like vanished. Um, we ju, but we do have students who are struggling with attendance and we have to do multiple things to track them down. Um, so, you know. Um, so, you know, we are, you know. We're going to just continue to use all of these different methods. We have a, a set of central school community outreach workers. Many of our, most of our schools have school community outreach workers. So we will really emphasize that if you didn't hear from somebody, that's not good enough. Cause we can't make one call, we didn't hear from you, so you're out, you don't have a spot. Um, and then, you know, I'm happy to work with you and others if you continue to have ideas about how we could do it well. Or you think there's some other uses, social media, et cetera, that we can use to, to spread the word. I'd be, you know, happy to get suggestions from you all too.
Um, what are your plans or what have you done to ensure that this MOU is accessible to all members of our community?
Right now, we have done very little, to be honest. Our job, we wanted to get this here quickly, cause we had it signed late last night. So we need to get things translated, we need to get it out. It does have a lot of sort of legal ease language. Um, so, you know, our summary PowerPoint, I think is helpful, um, that we can get out. We have a kind of really large community providers mass email list, so we send things out to them and they help. Um, you know, get out to the community through their organizations, churches, et cetera, so we'll use them to. Um, so we'll try to use all our methods and again, open if you are students, um, that you are representing. Have ideas about how to do that.
Um, I, I'd like to talk a little bit about substitute teachers there mentioned earlier. So what will be the process for substitute teachers? Um, and also will they be assigned, like, will they be assigned to specific schools? Or will they work in between schools as they previously have?
So that, that's a really good question. We will not, if the, we're not gonna have substitutes like the traditional idea. That the teacher's out today and there's a substitute teacher. The, the substitute teachers we're talking about is we do have some credential teachers. That potentially might be able to support the non-teacher-led hubs as we build that up there. But they're not designed or we're not in a position where we wanna have rotating teachers coming through each of these hubs. We think it's really important that it's the classroom, that teacher that's connected with them. In fact, if we had the adults out or they were ill or something came up, we would not run that hub, that class that day. That's gonna be part of the protocol, because again, safety is the most important thing. We can't start something that isn't safe. We have to do this right, we have to do it carefully.
Uh, just a few other questions. Um, I'd like to clarify a question that Trustee Reckler previously asked. Um, you will be providing snacks for the students who attend these sessions?
Yes, we will have, um, shelf-stable food in every school provided.
Will the students be eating these snacks while on campus?
So that's something we're still working on right now, based on the timelines. The goal is that it would be distributed right at the end of an instructional block, so that you're not taking the mask off inside the classroom or anything else. We'll be continuing to work on the, the models as we work on each individual site and how long each cohort goes. But we'll have it available. The current operational plan is at the end of the instructional block. It's a grab and go.
Um, so for those students who are in the, the instructional block from ten AM to three PM, will there be a time set aside for them?
Yes, there would be two times for them. They would have on each block would be a support time, so, yes.
Okay, um, that, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Leon?
Thank you, Trustee Emiliana. Um, so my first question is, uh, does the district have any plans to provide transportation for students who do wish to come back?
So we are, we have already begun meeting with, um, AC Transit and seeing what can be done there. We do some transportation for our special needs students during the normal year. Transportation is extremely unfortunately limited, even with lessening from six. It's not lessened inside the buses, so that is a very significant logistical challenge for students we don't normally transport.
Okay, and then, um, uh, on, on the, the time schedule that was shown earlier. Um, will there be time set aside for students to get to school, um, before the eight to ten period and before the two to four period?
That's an excellent question as we build the.
Yes, we're up that, and we've heard that concern and you've been a strong advocate, Trustee Leon, so far about transportation. And I appreciate that. We are trying to figure that out so that there is appropriate time. Um, for students to be able to get where they need to go. Um, and we're gonna really have to work with our secondary schools to, to be able to make sure that that happens. And any student who's, you know, going from one spot to another has the appropriate time to get there. Um, so we're, we're, we're trying and would love to talk to you more offline about that. And maybe particular bus routes that you or some of your, um, colleagues are using. That are really taking a long time that we can speak specifically to, to AC Transit or others about adding a line at a certain time.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, uh, I think Dr. World, you mentioned earlier that we, uh, the students will have two, um, break times. Is that correct?
So I was responding to Ms. Emiliana's, if someone was in the intervention block and also in the core hub. Where there's two different blocks, in that case, they would have, we would have distribution of that shelf-stable at the end of each of those blocks.
Okay, and then will children and students have recess? And, um, will social distancing, distance be enforced during these recess time?
So that, that's one of the other challenges on the whole social distancing, the whole recess and lunch issue. We're leaving each of those decisions up to the individual sites as they define their model. With the two adults, there is always going to be a strong encouragement. That whenever possible and appropriate, that they do some outdoor time in that learning and it's structured. But to say there's a structured guaranteed recess, we can't say that, because each site has to go through and to find the right model. For that group of students with the right spacing.
Okay, and then how often is sanitation of like the classroom, like common touch points, like doorknobs, whiteboards, walls, desks? Like how often would they be sanitized?
So, so Lewis is coming on.
We were working on, on the protocols for the cleaning, so we know there's enhanced details that will happen. It'll happen throughout the day periodically with our staff.
And then in certain classrooms, especially our special needs classrooms where you use common touch things. We're gonna actually have additional, um, cleaning materials that are directly accessible for the paraprofessionals and staff that are in there. To allow for immediate, um, sanitation between uses, especially with some of our students that have to have very hands-on manipulatives. And we're trying to work with our sites where possible, where we used to only have class sets. Potentially expand the materials as necessary to. Today, we directed our purchasing department to reopen the purchasing timelines, which is something we don't do at this time of the year. So we're keeping all channels open to support.
And our classrooms will have cleaning supplies in them as well for the teacher and our aide if they need to or feel the necessary to do some periodic cleaning as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I have one more, my final question is about play structures on like elementary and some middle school campuses. Like would that be off limits, um, for the students?
It goes into the same concept when you get into those high-touch areas. The second you get into a smaller structure, you create almost an immediate break from social distancing. So I'm not saying they're not gonna be used at all. We're gonna have very strict protocols and processes to ensure that we don't create. An unsafe environment.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Those are great questions, Trustee Leon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Leon. Mr. Duffy. Who was in the room when this new tentative agreement was negotiated?
I was in the room, uh, personally, um, from, we negotiated the final parts of this from twelve thirty PM yesterday. Till about one in the morning. Dr. World was and Kristen Hardy on our side. And there were one to two rep representatives, uh, from each of the five bargaining units.
Did. So all of the five bargaining units signed off on this. I mean, the leaders, I know they haven't voted, but I'm talking about the leaders.
Yes, and I do, I, I know this was asked earlier of me and I just really wanna tread carefully here. So that we don't, you know, quote-unquote, negotiate, discuss too much about negotiations in public. But I wanna try to answer your questions.
Okay, I'm not inviting anybody into the Zoom, um, but I am asking, did all five. Bargaining units, the leadership sign off on this tentative agreement?
Yes, as did we.
What happened to the Thursday cohort that was TBD in the last presentation?
Uh, well, on, um, Wednesday, when we had the presentation, I think we were, we tried to be as transparent as possible. That this was an issue that we were still working out, um, and we did go into negotiations. And, um, I'll turn it over to, to Dr. World, um, to kind of share how we got from there to here.
As we went through the discussion, we started to look at the logistics. How do you logistically do this? We just spent an hour with some very, very good questions. How are you gonna do this? One, two, three, four, five? As we started to try to negotiate language around this or that, the exceptions became so significant. That it became clear that all of the different logistics of it would not be suitable. And ultimately, the district looked at what is the best possible model. And it was determined that it is essential, we continue to provide food to the community. We cannot divert resources from that, and we did not have the sufficient resources to do both and maintain the safety and security of all. Because CSOs would have been pulled to two different directions, other staff would have been pulled to other directions. And so it was determined that that did not work, and that was part of the negotiations process.
Thank you. The stipend, uh, that is in the MOU is different from the stipend. That was in the original MOU or tentative agreement, correct?
It is different than the last agreement that was brought last Friday, which outlined a different model.
Why is the stipend different?
I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. World again, and I'm gonna help where needed.
We believe that our singular goal, AB eighty-six was designed to provide funding. To open backup schools. We, as we were in negotiations, which is part of the process, defined that we want to pay our employees. To reopen schools. Our last best offer that the, at the time was that this was the best methodology. To honor our employees with the first payment. As soon as we know that we are gonna meet all of the expectations of AB eighty-six, we're gonna bring the second half in. I hope to be able to make that announcement for the first day of school and move forward. But this was the configuration that we felt was in the best interest of the district, not to spend money we don't have until we have it. Because we have to meet AB eighty-six to pay for that. So everything else is a risk. We took the best benefit to getting our employees compensated, our students served.
With increasing the stipend prior to receiving AB eighty-six money, put the district in financial danger?
Yes, it'd be spending money we don't have yet.
You touched on this a little bit, but why are we not following the three feet guidance from the CDC? Why are we staying with the old six-foot guidance?
That guidance changed in the last week. As we talked about the psychology of going through this. This is a volunteer model. We don't believe also in the intervention. Putting too many kids in the class, you're not gonna get that individual attention that they really need. We really believe to do this right, you've gotta have it in a small, stable cohort that you can give that individual attention to. And bring them forward. So that aligned well with the six-foot guidance, which is what was in place when we began the process. Just because it changed in the middle, you don't necessarily have to change the same day. That would be too much of a shift for people that didn't even know that information when we started.
Is the preamble to this tentative agreement part of the agreement?
No, it was guiding principles and, and going in, the agreement begins on. I'm not sure whatever page, the actual agreement is page six. The preamble was really just. An opening statement of belief.
Would it change anything about the agreement to add a clause? Like the first clause, for example, that just says the preamble is not part of the agreement?
I, I don't believe that would change the agreement. It's not. The contractual.
Do you think that that, adding that language would clarify things for people who are asking about the preamble?
Yeah, we, we, we can do that.
Can you explain to me how, and I'm gonna clarify this, because other people have asked about it and I'm still not clear. When are the kids supposed to get their snacks?
So we have said that there would be a time with, at the end of each of their blocks, uh, intervention block or an intervention. Uh, uh, core class, um, that they would be offered, um, a snack if they needed one.
So if they are doing the ten to two cohort, you're not, are you saying that they don't get their food until two?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, well, I was at the end of a class period, so even elementaries sort of break that up. We would leave that, you know, to the teachers to work that through, but if a student comes in at ten, we wouldn't. Um, withhold food from them all the way until two o'clock.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, when you do go back or talk, you know, through this. I think maybe, maybe I'm not the only one that's confused about that. Okay, um. And those are all of my, well, so. Public, we're about to move to public comment. Um, it's ten oh one right now, so raise your hand, uh, if you wanna speak. Uh, board, it's up to thirty now. Excuse me, it's up to thirty-four. Okay, thirty-eight. Raise your hand if you wanna talk. Forty-one, forty-two. Okay, it looks like it stopped at forty-nine. Um, we're gonna go to public comment board, we're gonna need to extend, uh, the meeting. Uh, because after this is over, we still have to have discussion. Um, and then we have to vote, and then we have to go back into closed session. Well, and then we have other items, then we have to go back in the closed session, uh, as well. So I am asking that we. So I am asking that we, I am asking for a motion. About an hour of public comment. I'm asking for a motion until one. And I don't know what to say, but when we don't get out of closed session on time and we have big issues, this is what happens. So we got work to do. Can I have a motion to extend this meeting to one? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, on to the vote.
Consult for yes.
And Smith Folds? I said it, I said it wrong, but Smith Folds were.
Smith Folds, um, yes, President Phillips, I, I have one question. Would this include board comment at the end, or it's, it's still up in the air depending on where we land?
I have no clue. It's what we can do by one o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Smith Folds, yes.
Okay, um, Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Christian?
Christian, yes.
Leon?
Leon, yes.
Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Phillips? Yes. All right, we are going to begin public comment. Um, they have a minute and thirty seconds apiece.
Hey, I am calling on the first public comment, Gabriella Nicoletti.
Hello, trustees, and I want to give a huge shout out to, um, trustee Smith Folds, for really keeping students at the center of her questions. Um, I urge you to approve this MOU, and hopefully all five units approve, and we can actually move forward. And hopefully our community can begin to heal from all the misinformation and discord that's been sown. I hope all the outside agendas will disappear so that we can focus on a safe return and the best possible education for students, which is the goal of every stakeholder here, from the parents to the teachers, to the other district staff, to the students themselves. While I agree with Mr. Aurelio that we do not want to begin with a deficit mindset, I do want to remind those who are not with children all the time that transitioning to in-person school, or for some kids coming to school for the first time, is going to bring big changes for them. And even excitement can create behaviors that we might need to curtail for safety reasons. Additionally, this has been a year of various traumas. Their entire world changed overnight. They went to school one day and then never again for a year. Many have experienced housing insecurity, food insecurity, or deaths and disease in their families. Of course, students will be excited to be back, but those traumas live on, and being back won't instantly fix that. This may lead to emotional reactions that on the surface don't look logical or make sense to the observer. But anyone with a trauma-informed practice would recognize that this is just emotions coming out. I really hope actual plans will be made instead of hoping for the best and setting up teachers and students for success in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jean Kinsner.
Good evening, board. I would like to, um, ask that you please vote yes to support this. Um, I also want to thank all of the people that kept their children and the staff and the safety at the forefront of all the questioning to clarify things. Um, I think that the credit unions, I mean, credit unions, ha, 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 the unions and the district have made a lot of time, a lot of sacrifices, a lot of emotion, a lot of investment in this. And it sounds like this is really good considering everything that we've had going on and all the different interests that need to come together. So please consider this, please pass this. We've heard forever, our kids need to be back at school, our kids need to be back in school, and we're really trying to get them back in school. So please support us, and let's get our kids back to school.
Our next public speaker is Amy Evangelista Marquada.
Good evening, everyone. I am a resident of this district, and I'm also, uh, and I'm also an employee. I am a speech pathologist, and I've been working for this district for twenty-one years now. Thank you to the district team and all the unions that worked until one AM this morning for this TA. I am strongly encouraging the board to approve this TA. I am excited to be back in person, to work with the students who need their assessment. I do assessments at my site, and I do it for the district at the non-public school sites. I would love to save this district money, so though we don't get those requests for IEEs, please approve this, um, TA, uh, or this, uh, MOU. We would love to come back. Thank you.
Mariela Cuellar.
Mariela Cuellar, a mother of Richmond High School, also an employee. I am a, um, paraprofessional. I work for, uh, preschool classroom. I, at this point, it doesn't matter what I say, but I'm going to say my, what comes from my heart. I hear a lot of unknowns, a lot of doubts. I just hope that everyone that decides to come back to be safe and healthy, um, and whoever volunteers, good luck to you. Um, for me, a lot of things sounds like babysitting. And one thing that I would say is that I love for my daughter to go back to school, but she will come back and fall on the new school year. I, as an employee, will come back on, on the new school year on fall. So I just hope that the people, the families that decide that they have the option to come back to really keep the district and everybody and your own family accountable and be transparent with the families that decide to come back. I hope, I wish good luck to everyone. See you on the new school year as a mother with my daughter as an, as an employee, because I am not a babysitter. Thank.
Thank you. Our next speaker is April Miller.
Good evening. I'm a parent of two elementary students in the district. First, I'd like to thank the board and all the staff and teachers for their hard work on the MOU and for educating our children in these very challenging times. I'm very happy to see this progress, intervention plan, and also the options for families and teachers to make the choice that is best for them. I ask that you approve MOU tonight. Please don't limit group size. I urge the district to follow the CDC and California Department of Public Health guidelines. That three feet is absolutely safe. I'm concerned, um, one snack at the end of the four-hour period might be too long a time for our youngest learners and possibly some of the older kids. So I'd like y'all to take another look at that. Um, is there distance learning on Thursdays and Fridays? That was unclear to me. Um, I'd like to see this plan be open to as many students as possible and like to urge the district and unions to return to the bargaining, bargaining table if we do not have sufficient volunteer teachers. Thank you, everyone.
Our next public speaker is Holly Ruff. Moving on to our next public speaker, Evan Miller.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, this is Liz Evans' wife. Um, I'm a mother, um, in the district, um, and a nurse. And I just want to, um, speak towards, um, how it was three feet on Wednesday and six feet today. My overall goal, goal is just to get as many kids back in the district as possible. Um, and I think that the very nature of science that is, that as it evolves, we learn more. We now have a year of research on COVID, and the regulations are not stagnant. We don't use the same guidelines from a year ago because we know more about the virus and how it spreads. We don't believe the world is flat today because we have new evidence that evolved, and we came to an, an understanding that the world is round. It is natural that guidelines evolved to meet the current understanding. As a nurse, I know this, um, in my personal work, and we're flexible and we understand that. Um, the specific study, it was done in Massachusetts. It had over two hundred and fifty schools, over five hundred thousand students, over one hundred thousand staff over sixteen weeks during the fall and winter. And the conclusion was that six feet was no safer than three feet. This was at a time when there was no vaccines available. So now when we add this additional safety layer in, three feet is safe. It concerns me when the district changes from three feet to six feet. And then they say, uh, not based on science, but on feelings. And now they're saying that school will be open in the fall, but they might change that. I don't know.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Ruff.
Hello, I'm a teacher with the district, and there are some, some, some confusing elements for me. I'm a first grade teacher. Let me just say I have twenty-four students, and I want all twenty-four students in my classroom. That said, I'm confused. In the initial MOU, we were allowed to, to choose either cohort or hub. The cohort, either morning or afternoon, or hub between ten and two. And now I'm confused. Do we have to do a cohort, cohort and a hub? Am I teaching from ten to three o'clock without a break? Without a bathroom break, without a lunch? Because last, um, school board meeting Duffy said that there would be someone to maybe a, a neighbor teacher who would come into our classroom so that we could hurry up and go to the bathroom. That's not going to work. Also, it's very disrespectful to make us work for less than subpay so you can get your ABC eighty-six. I understand that the money is important, but let's give quality, not just money-grabbing inconsistencies. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Glazer.
Hi, thank you. Um, Joseph Glazer, seventh grade history teacher, Hercules Mill. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Emma Urbach, our UTR executive director, and Marissa Glidden, our UTR president. Your determination to get this job done has been inspiring to watch. Thank you to everyone else who worked on this plan through marathon meetings. My message tonight is simple. Let's get the job done. No agreement is perfect, but this one gets us back in person for any student and staff who volunteer to do so. There's good safety requirements, and this seems like a workable model. This agreement isn't perfect, but it's as good as it's going to get for the spring, folks. Please approve this MOU tonight so we can move on from this painful, difficult, divisive, stressful period for all of us. And let's get down to business on implementing this plan and start planning for the fall now so we can avoid all the pitfalls we ran into on this one. Let's try planning ahead a little this time. Also, maybe instead of doing six-hour meetings every two weeks, maybe we can have three-hour board meetings every week. And we can bring back the standing reports and extend public comment pers- permanently and be more inclusive to public participation. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Dan Shulman.
All right, uh, thank you. I, I guess I have a question. Uh, I'm a elementary school parent, um, about the experience for the first grader, second grader. If they're left to go to the hub, um, ten to two PM, um, are they bringing their, their Chromebooks and just sitting at the desk with, with the Chromebook for the day? Um, if the teacher is there, do they, are they opening the Chromebook or not? Um, and if the teacher's not there, is it still all the kids sitting at desks with, with Chromebooks? I'm just trying to understand that experience for an elementary school kid, and I don't know if that's more of a site-specific question. Um, the other question I have is, is with the space requirements. If, um, if there's more kids who would like to participate in the hub, um, but the space does not, uh, fit them all with the distancing, um, is it possible to, to, you know, maybe one group comes on Monday, one group comes on Tuesday, one group comes on Wednesday, just so everybody, you know, has an opportunity to be with their teacher in person, wondering if that's possible. Um, but all in all, I mean, I, I, I think this is a good agreement. Um, I would urge you, I hope you vote for it. And I know everybody worked really hard on it, so, so I really appreciate all of that. Um, I really agree with, uh, with what Mr. Uh, Glazer said just a few moments ago, uh, as well as the, hope that first grade teachers' questions about the breaks is also sufficiently answered as well. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Justin Trujillo.
Hello, my name is Justin Trujillo. I'm a junior at, uh, Pinot Valley High School. Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Jamila Smith Folds and the student trustees for their great questions. They really clarified some things I was confused on. And I'm sure for many others too. Uh, I'd also like to thank everyone who worked on this plan. Um, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but, you know, most of us want to get back, and as long as we can do it safely, that's like, that's, that's the main, it's the bulk of the importance. But, um, I also think that, uh, a good idea would be to include, uh, uh, maps of the campuses that will be used because a lot of students haven't even seen their, uh, home campus yet. And we'll probably get lost going back. Um, I know some schools have, uh, maps, but a lot of them don't, including mine. And, um, I think it's also a good idea for, um, students who are returning to their campus in case they're, uh, they can't go to the normal classroom they're in, and they have to go to a different, um, class for a hub or for a cohort. So I think that it'd just be important to include, um, campus maps. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sneha Patel.
Hi, I'd like to thank the board for their hard work so far. I'm the parent of a second grader and a fifth grader in WCCUSD. And once again, I want to reiterate that I am a Brown, a minority, and an immigrant voice, and I very much want my children back in school. I strongly believe that this MOU is a step in the right direction, and I'm very grateful for all the work done on it. However, I do urge the board, as you hopefully vote yes on this MOU, to stick to the guidelines from the CDC, from the California Department of Public Health that talk about three feet of distance versus six feet, so that we can get as many of our children back in classrooms as possible. I believe this is really important to the social and mental well-being of our children and to continuing to bridge the achievement gap that we have regressed so far in this past year as children were kept at home. Once again, thank you very much, and I urge you to vote yes on this MOU.
Our next public speaker is Renee Rubin-Ross.
Hi there, this is Renee Rubin-Ross. I am a parent of a sixth and eighth grader in the district. I want to also urge you to a, uh, approve the MOU. I want to thank everybody for the months of hard work that has, um, needed to happen to get to this place. Um, I am a parent of a child with some learning challenges. Online learning has been really brutal for our family, both in terms of mental health and impacts to learning. I deeply believe we need to get our children, we need to get all the children or as many who are willing to come back to school in person as soon as possible. And I also want to encourage you to follow the public health guidelines, which are currently three feet. We encourage our children to keep up with science, and we, as a district, should absolutely be doing the same thing. So once again, thank you for all the hard work. Please approve this MOU. We need to get our children back in schools, just like all of the other districts around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Andrea Wildenberg.
Hi there, it's Andrea, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I know this has been a whirlwind of a week, but, um, thanks for all your hard work to get it to this point where it is. Um, I think that this is a, you know, of, a great improvement over where it was a week ago. And, um, I think you guys should go for it. Um, I do just want to ask a question really about the academic block from ten AM to two slash three PM. Um, I hope when you, just something to consider, when you survey parents about that, just to kind of clarify whether that means that, you know, your kid, in our case, it's a kindergartner, would that mean that we're committing to having her in school from ten to two or three? Or just in school from some TBD period of time within that block? For instance, is it possible it's just ten to eleven-thirty or just, you know, twelve-thirty to two? That's really what I'd like, you know, as we decide these things, it's really kind of down to that nuts and bolts for whether we say yes or no to this. Um, I'm glad it's an option for everyone, but just it'll help a lot to, to know, is it ten to two? Or is it ten to eleven-thirty possibly? Um, that's it. Thanks, guys, so much.
Our next public speaker is Our next public speaker is Enzoza. You may unmute.
Hi there, um, I just have a couple of points. Um, in the MOU, I did not see anything regarding testing for adults and or high schoolers. Um, specifically for student athletes, we've allowed the student athletes to go back. There's no test requirement. However, at multiple schools in our surrounding area, they do have a testing requirement. I observed a game today and there were no masks being worn. So I would like to say that I think it is important that we actually focus a little bit on some of the um, other activities that we've allowed to take place and for the future, especially going back in fall. Um, I also want to emphasize what trustee Smith Folds mentioned. I appreciate exactly what she said about having some better understanding around the secondary classes structure and what would happen. You have a lot of kids going in and out of multiple classrooms. It's virtually impossible to be able to have them cohorts. And I think that there needs to be a better study plan around this. There's a lot of focus around elementary school, but there's a lot of high schoolers that are being left behind as well and not getting the kind of college preparatory instruction that they need. And I think it's really important that you spend a little bit of time addressing the high schoolers that we need to help, you know, move on successfully. Lastly, I would like to emphasize what trustee Leong said about transportation. It's very important. A lot of our students rely on transportation. They're going to be in this cohort group that needs to get to school and we're not supporting them. And one plug for also mental health support, not just training, but money like the JMP. Support them financially, other schools, elementary too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Guadalupe Elanya. Guadalupe? I'll come back to her. The next public speaker is Kai Bohan. You may unmute.
Well, board members, I'm Kay Bohan, a second grade parent and incoming kindergartner at Elohorst. Thank you. I'm grateful for the progress we made in the past week. This revised MOU is a positive step in the right direction. And I would like you to vote yes tonight. I hope that many teachers and staff volunteer to return, but there may not be enough volunteers to accommodate all the students who would like to return. So I spoke with the principal after Wednesday's session and that Tom, that time block at 10 AM to 2 PM is when the teachers are teaching. So schools will need no resources and incentives to sta- staff a hub. So the success of this MOU is really dependent on the staffing. We want this to be as open to as many students as possible. I look forward to seeing as many students and teachers returning to the classroom. Thank you for prioritizing the needs of the students of this district. Thanks.
Our next public speaker is Christina Veronian.
This is Christina Veronian. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lincoln and I'm also Richmond resident. Um, there's a few points. I don't even know where to start at this point. Um, number one, Mr. Duffy, you said we have been listening to the community over the past months. I'd love to ask you which community you're listening to. Because it doesn't seem like you're listening to the whole community. Uh, Mr. Aurelio, you said scroll, small group instruction is a hallmark of our program. I assume you're referring to Teachers College. Part of the small group instructional program that we've all been trained in and use in our classroom as an elementary school teacher, I will tell you, is sitting knee to knee, sitting on the carpet, small group. We make a little Eiffel Tower and they sit in front of each other, make eye contact. All of that is out the window. Okay, so this is not normal instruction. And the idea that you want us to assess kids after they've been out of school for a year? Like insanity, I'm sorry. Um, yes, the kids are excited to go back. And this, this idea that it's just all going to be great. It, it's fine and dandy for y'all to sit there and think that, but I guess who are the ones that actually deal with the ins and outs? The teachers. And uh, we should, we should uh, be talked to about how things are really going to go and the help we're going to need. We've been conditioned for a year to think six feet. Our kids are trained, we are. So for these parents to think that, um, oh, well, it changed this week, so we're all good with three feet now. Sorry, we need some new training around this. We need to feel comfortable. We're scared. The kids are scared. COVID is still happening. People are dying.
Thank, thank you very much. Our next public speaker is Myrna Bymaster. You may unmute.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Myrna Bymaster. I live in San Pablo. And earlier today, someone had asked about how do the actual students feel about returning? And I had to make the heart wrenching decision to pull my second grader out of Downer Elementary. And I did this because I wanted, he needed to go to in-person school. So he attends Elsabroni Christian right now. And I'm just going to tell you, his attitude, his overall excitement is amazing. He's learning, he's being with friends. So I just see the positive in the new plan. So I really hope that you guys vote for it. It's not perfect, yeah, but it's a step in the right direction. And I just, I, I'm almost crying because I just feel like our kids need to go back to school. Our teenagers need to go back to school. I have a I have a 15 year old son. He attends middle college. And I see all of these kids in our community in San Pablo, Richmond. I talked to all these parents. And our kids are depressed, they're isolated, they need to go back. Is it going to be the same how it was before? No, it's going to be new, it's going to be different and it is scary. But we need to take that leap of faith and get our kids back. So I just really hope that the trustees, you think of our kids and that you vote yes on this new agreement. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Ashley Bonifacio.
Hi, we'd like to thank everyone involved in the teachers, everyone on the board for all of their work, their commitment to the students and for improving the conditions in our community and for our kids. Um, we definitely think that the new MOU shows that a lot of work has been done, a lot of improvements been made. Uh, it's clear that a lot of work is going to need to happen still very quickly, even if it's passed. Uh, as parents of a student with an IEP and a young student uh, with an IEP, we still see a lot of gaps and questions and concerns that we have. One thing I haven't heard addressed is the overlap between uh, the students who are at the highest risk and with the most need returning to school and these students who have the least ability to understand why masks are needed. And will be least comfortable wearing them for an extended period of time. Especially if this mask mandate is going to be enforced by people that these children really have never seen in person and are not familiar with. So I hope that that concern is going to be addressed and a lot of thought will go into that. Um, also for our daughter, she is required to have a speech and OT therapy. It's unclear from the draft MOU whether or not these types of required therapies are going to be happening during the core segment or if this will be in the intervention. How it'll be decided whether the early or later intervention period will be used for students. If it will be both for each campus, how students will be assigned or split up. Either way, we hope that this is passed so that all of this work can be figured out as soon as possible to get students back into class. And thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jose Deleon.
Good evening, board. Uh, good evening, Superintendent Duffy. Couple of things, planning is important. The vote of the board is only the beginning of this process, not the end. We always want to make sure that all the sites are student centered planning. Uh, the sites will not look the same from school to school. Inside teams have a lot of work to do in front of them. Uh, to keep this in mind that this is a monumental task in a very short amount of time. Therefore, as we look towards summer, as we look to fall, short planning um, is not the best planning that can happen. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Our next public speaker is Kristen Persley.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Kristen Persley and I'm an English as a second language teacher for the adult school. I'm also the president of the Adult School Teachers Union. I want to speak tonight in favor of the MOU. I'm particularly impressed by the way this MOU was carefully designed to preserve the quality of online education for the children that will continue to learn from home while opening in-person learning for the children that need it. As an adult school teacher, I am aware that not all families want to send their children back to in-person learning at this time. Many of our students want to be cautious. I mean, I, our students, the adults want to be cautious about returning their children to school and want to continue with online learning. The main downside of blended learning models where the teacher has some students in the classroom and others learning online is that the quality of online learning deteriorates while the teacher focuses on the children in the classroom. The MOU carefully avoids this pitfall by making sure that there will be a class classified staff member as well as a teacher in every classroom where online and in-person learning are combined so that one staff person can monitor the learning of the online learners at all times. This is an equitable way to reopen school and I think the district can be proud of an agreement that provides the best quality education possible for children who will continue to learn online as well as children who will return for in-person instruction. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Astrid Roberk. You may unmute.
Um, yeah, I just wanted, I, I have still some questions about this for the online learners. I heard a lot about the plan for getting the kids back into school. Uh, I have to disagree with the speaker before me. I didn't really hear uh, the plan that much, uh, what will happen. Except for that there will be cameras in the classrooms. Um, I don't understand how the distance learners will connect with the teacher, how they will ask questions, how they will give input or be heard while the teacher is in person in the classroom. Um, I know board member Reckler, thank you, touched on that question, but um, it didn't get that much of an attention. Um, so I hope you won't leave the distance learners behind. And one more thing, the mental health of my children is my responsibility. I think we are putting a lot on the teachers. We don't pay them enough. And we expect them to be mental health professionals, best friends. Their teachers, they're there to teach our children. And the core responsibility for the mental health of our te- of our children lies on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Wendy Tong Cairo, and I'm sorry about the last name.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I've never spoken before. Um, I'm a parent at the district and I have a seventh grader and I have a lot of concerns um, about the way that transparency is talked about, um, communication, feedback and input. And I, I want to um, echo some concerns that I heard about the number of people that are going to be allowed to come, whether it's 10 to 14 kids. There are 29 kids in my daughter's class and from what I understand, eavesdropping on her chat, they're all eager to go back to class. And I don't, how are you going to decide which 14? And I, I think that you've already said that the 5% go back first and I agree that that's really important, but how are you going to deal with the other kids that can't and want to? Um, and I'm also really concerned with, I feel like this is kind of tearing our community apart. I really care about these teachers very much and to hear the anger and the pain that they're going through is really, really disturbing to me. And finally, I just want to thank all of the trustees for their really great questions, especially the student trustees and y'all has given me so much hope for the future. So, thank you.
Our next public speaker is Deborah.
Hello, good evening. My name is Deborah Small. I'm a custodial grandparent of a fourth grader at Michelle Obama School. I want to thank you all for all of your hard work. Um, I want to also really thank you for keeping in mind the public safety part of this plan. Um, my grandson needs very much to go back to school. What was he needs even more than that is to make sure that I'm here and healthy. He's already lost both of his parents. He can't afford to lose anyone else. Um, and that brings me to a question that I had about the masking. I understand that it's going to be required for all students, but how will you deal with students who have respiratory issues like asthma or emphysema that limits their ability to wear masks at all times? I'm also wondering about what are the specific criteria for identifying the highest need students? And how will that impact African American students who don't have disabilities or IEP? I want to mention, I'm also a member of the ASAT Executive Board and are particularly concerned about the way that the plan will accommodate the needs and the achievement needs particularly of our African American boys and girls. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lauren Burns.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm a parent of a third and fifth grader in the district. I'm pleased to see many of the addendums presented in this evening. I appreciate the emphasis on equality, safety and the choice to be in-person or remote. I'm in support of a yes vote. However, I'm disappointed to hear that you are reverting back to the outdated guideline of six feet distancing on campus in spite of the current CDC recommendation and scientific proof that three feet is just as safe as six. It's unclear why you plan to follow this recommendation in fall, but not this spring. This obviously reduces the number of students in a classroom. Please address how students will be prioritized to stay with their teacher if more students opt to return in a specific classroom than can fit using the six foot rule. I find this predicament to be very detrimental to the wellbeing of children. Suddenly, there has to be a choice between students. Who makes the cut and who doesn't? Where do these children go? There will be instances where choices will have to be made between children in the same need tier. This will cause additional harm to our children. I imagine they will have feelings of rejection perhaps by their teacher whom they trust. So many of our children's mental states are fragile at this time. During this pandemic, we've heard from the parents of many children in our district diagnosed with mental health conditions who are in critical need of support, mine included. I implore you to follow the current CDC guidance of three feet. Not only do I worry about the mental health implications of not doing so, but I also worry the district will not qualify for the AB 86 funds because the district will not uh, be allowing for the return of the students to, I quote, the greatest extent possible.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Lauren Levin. You may unmute.
Hi, and um, thank you so much to the board trustees, to the bargaining units, to the district staff. Um, I, I think that we've come a long way and I'm impressed by um, the changes in this MOU compared to the last one. Um, uh, one, one concern that I immediately had with seeing the old plan is I was glad that it prioritized the highest need students, but was thinking, you know, how will working parents come for two hours? So now I think, okay, so people have the hub and their intervention block and I just feel like it gives a lot more of our kids who might really need this the most, the actual chance to um, to, you know, not have barriers to accessing it. So I think that's great. Um, I was going to say in reference to the sort of three feet and just generally the science and health communication discussion, I think that the discussion around PTSD and what many of our communities have gone through and the trauma people have undergone is really relevant. But I hope that the board will continue to invest in communication around the science and in allowing people to ask questions and having people who are trusted, who can answer questions and, and giving us flexibility. So perhaps we start with six feet. Can we have a check-in point to see if people are ready to move to three feet? So that more children can be served. Um, I, I do understand the balance that we have to strike, but I think that it's really important that um, board be also invested in communication and in making people feel safe and comfortable. Um, if psychology is an issue, let's really help people get
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Sado Wilson.
Good evening, everyone. So as there's conversation about what's happening for spring, it is best to start thinking about what's going to happen for summer. But most importantly, it's going to happen for fall. So there's been a lot of speculation and a lot of conversations about things that may work, could work, hopefully work and so on. And since at the last board meeting on Wednesday night, it's pretty much stated that we will be returning in fall even though we're not 100% sure. So that statement's been made. So now everyone's going to assume that we are coming back in fall regardless. But with that said, there needs to be some serious, transparent voices from all sides around all the community, everyone about what's going to happen on our sites in this district. And we also need to include everyone. And we need to stop hiding under the guise of race and equity and assuming that race and equity and use the word equity and transparency that that actually solves everything. It's very clear that equity and transparency is false because if that was the case, we would have a lot more success this past school year. So regardless of what the outcome is this evening, we still need to think about the future and we still need to make plans for the fall regardless. We want to go back, everyone wants to go back, but we need to really be aware and conscious and here's a concept, actually think about what needs to happen at our school sites for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Nesko Falcon.
Good evening, board. Thank you again for working on this. I think it should move forward. But I do want to take some time here to really caution the district on this initial call to defer to emotions over the well-being of children with the decision to stick with six feet. And I think it's contingent on how long we just decided to stick with that, right? The scientists are determined with statistical certainty, but three feet's no different from six feet. And do we not teach our children to trust institutions and experts who are hired by the public to keep us safe? Are we supposed to teach them to mistrust that expertise? And if you're telling me to listen to emotional full-grown adults before we consider what's best for children, I think that's a very dangerous mindset for a public education institution to take because you're supposed to shape the minds of these children. The kids have no power here, but you do. And it should be a very short period of time of getting used to new facts and truth before we allow the normalization of denial of facts and science. And this school should be the bulwark against that kind of thinking. So perhaps when we get to the orange tier or some not-too-distant future here where people can get used to these things and we have an exceedingly tiny number of cases left in the district where campuses may have zero cases, I think it would be time to revisit this fairly soon. I get getting used to new facts, take some short period of time, a week or two or maybe a little more, but give people time to apply critical thinking to these studies. But we cannot allow the denial of facts just because we don't like them and I think that's a very dangerous lesson to teach children. If you don't think so, think about where we are in climate change, think about the COVID being a hoax, think about denial of vaccine effectiveness. That's what we're adding to if we allow denialism being the governing policy of a public education institution. So I pray for you to understand the ramifications of this decision. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jessica Nantinchuk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Jessica Nantinchuk. I'm a parent in the district. I'm just going to say that I do think you should vote for it, but I do ask that everybody respect the staff and teachers if they choose not to come back to not try to renegotiate and make them come back because that's not going to help anybody. Something that really brought, stopped me was the food. I have a child that's not in the school district yet, but will be. That has a sphere nut allergy. And I'm worried about the kids in the district that have food allergies. One, you need to let them know what you're providing and where it's coming from. That's hugely important. You need to make sure people on site, whoever they are, can give EpiPens if necessary, if there's a reaction. All the stuff, when you were talking about the food, just gave me so much anxiety thinking of my child. And also, I don't know how you plan on children to be able to make it through those core blocks with just a snack when those timeframes are when they eat lunch. So I don't know how that's going to work. I feel like it's going to cause a lot of stress and anxiety on the children and then the staff having to deal with a lot of honesty of being hangry children. But I do ask that you please be super transparent with the food on campus because if they have to eat in classrooms, if somebody has a food allergy and it's in their 504 plan that you can't eat in a classroom because of cross-contamination, that's a real risk to someone's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Hope Ham.
Hello, I am a paraprofessional and a parent with three children in the district. I have a kindergartner, a third grader and a seventh grader. It's been tough, but we've been, we've done what we had to do. My worry is that there was a thing about asking about grace and flexibility for masks. In my opinion, masks must be worn. And parents, if you want your children to go back, you should start training them now on wearing a mask, making sure it fits them and that they're used to having it on for six hours a day just so that their peers are comfortable and their teachers are comfortable as well. I'm very appreciative of all the work that the teachers and staff have done with distance learning and that the board and administrative have done with this MOU. There's been a lot of talk about kids going back, but there hasn't been so much to ensure that the kids that are going to be distance learning are going to continue to thrive. It took the teachers a long time to learn the tech that's gone on for Zoom, Jamboard, Whiteboard and to give them three days to learn how to use a webcam, all the kinks with no run-throughs doesn't seem very well thought out. Also, how will you communicate to the students that are going to be distance learning that their teacher might not be as fun and interactive as they have been before because now they're in a classroom? That communication needs to be done and I, thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Olivia Arazia.
Hi, good evening. I'm just calling to share my support for getting our children back at schools this spring. I think that there's a lot of details that still need to be ironed out. I appreciate that the work that you all have ahead of you is going to be a tremendous amount of work. I've also heard that there's a lot of emphasis and value placed on schools shaping what that looks like, but I hope that these inconsistencies in your planning, your lack of planning because of how long this has taken to get you all at the table, does it all fall on school sites to deal with and take care of in the name of school autonomy? There's also just questions about the plan and how it was presented this evening. For example, I still have no idea what's happening on Thursdays and Fridays during the academic block time, so that 10 to 2 or 10 to 3. And I've heard other people ask the same question and I think that even some board members asked and it's still unclear. I also think that questions around food are important. These are the questions that I think parents are going to start thinking about as inconsequential as it might seem with such huge logistical problems and obstacles you're facing, they're really important for us to make the decision. And finally, I really wish that you would follow the science. You can't pick and choose what parts of science you're going to listen to. And thank you for all your work and I urge you all to vote yes.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Molly Wood.
Good evening. I appreciate all of your work to get this MOU to a better place, but I still have questions. First, what if more than 14 students in a class want to return to school? How do you decide which students will attend? Second, if children are kept out of school because you are limited by six feet of distancing, then can you really claim that you are providing in-person school to the greatest extent possible based on the latest guidance from federal, state and county experts? And if not, are we actually eligible for AB-86 funds? Please do not pick and choose what science to believe. I would also like to add that I understand school will not be like pre-COVID times, but it will be a vast improvement for my kids being on their Chromebooks all day. Thank you. I know this is a big improvement, but I still feel we have a ways to go before we provide to all of the children in this district.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Selena Hunter.
Hello, everyone. It's late. I will be short because we have to talk again. I just want to thank the board for their work, the district. I know this was not easy as a parent and as a teacher. I am torn in many different ways and every single day my feelings change. So I understand parents who want their kids to go back to school and parents who don't. I would ask that you are, I want to thank you actually for considering the input from our parents. I did hear that reflected in your plans, but I did also hear a lot of, mm, a good question, I don't know, not sure from our superintendent and some others. So I would really like to get that ironed out. I will say that for West Contra Costa, when it catches a cold, black students get pneumonia, but in this case, we're talking about COVID. And it's very serious. We cannot lose anyone because of mistakes. We need to be clear on what is going to happen in our schools for safety. And so I'm really looking to you all, even though I know you've been working hard to get this done and get it done correctly so that we don't have unnecessary mistakes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Rebecca Goldfarb.
Hi, this is Rebecca's husband. My name is David Montes. I'm a father of two kids in the district. And first and foremost, I just want to say we were so disappointed a couple of weeks ago and this MOU is a huge improvement. It's, we're so grateful to the board and everybody who's been putting in these long hours. The union leadership negotiating this. We're very excited about it. Our kids are terribly excited to get back to school. They really need it. They need to be with their peers. They're not in the same place they were last year. I'm really disappointed to see the move from three-foot distancing back to six feet based on psychology. I think it's very important that we are guided by science and not emotion in these decisions. And it's going to limit the number of kids we can have on site and it's going to make it really hard to enforce. I think it's important that you give parents as much information as you can about what these days are going to look like before we have to commit to coming back. Especially for those kids whose teachers will be remaining at home, what their day will look like when they're at the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Tracy Stokes.
Hello, this is Tracy. My, I currently have a student that, well, a child that is in special needs. And it sounds like there is lots of uncertainties about instruction and how it's going to be achieved. How is it possible for teachers with a hub and a cohort build relationships with our kids to help them thrive academically? Especially if the teacher is a new person to these students that are actually going to be meeting them the same day that they actually start teaching the students. I hope that the district includes more teachers and parents with making these decisions that affect our kids. I don't feel as a parent sending my child to school is going to be beneficial. Classes can be hybrid or online and I feel if my child is going to have to be in a class that's going to be hybrid, I feel at home is most best. I do feel that decisions are being made, are being rushed. One week there is one agreement, the next week there's another agreement. I feel that these decisions are being rushed solely for government funding. I'm starting to feel as a parent, my child is a number and not a human to the district. I'm moving, moving forward, I hope the plan is tweaked with the kids' best interests at heart. I'm looking forward to the day I can send my child back to school. From what I heard today, that will not happen unless the plan is much clearer and stronger. Thank you to the board and everyone involved.
Our next public speaker is Rosario Sanchez.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. First thing I have to say, thank you to everyone who is working really hard on this plan from the district, from the kids that have to learn how to use a Chromebook, you know, TK's kindergarten, from the parents who have to learn to use a computer, from the teacher that we all have to improvise. We have to work really hard. I know we can do it. I like the plan, but also I have a lot of concerns, especially because I have a son that have an IEP that fit on the list of the kids can come back to school. But what about the other siblings? Because I have to take my son to school now that my, my daddy has to take the class in the car while I drive his brother to school. Then I have to come back to pick him up and she has to lose another hour in the car because he's not, she's not going to be able to be on Zoom with her teacher. So there's a lot of concerns, concerns about the food for the kids who has special needs. My son, it's, he cannot have the mask for some period of time. So I know we can learn during this process. We all can improvise. If we did it in the past, we can do it. We can work with this. But we need to be, everybody needs to be on the same path. And I know we can do it. Just make sure you give all the tools to the teachers, to the school and to the kids so we all can do best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sam Watson Alvarado.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I am making a public comment this evening. Coming from a mental health professional standpoint, working in West Contra Costa, serving primarily children who reside in Richmond. And what I want to just point out tonight is that I do think this MOU does, and the plan has a strong social, emotional learning component to it. However, I think that there's a huge chunk of this that is missing, which is what is the plan? And what are the specific tools that our educators are going to have when they return to schools in person? Knowing that the children, the students have been dealing with a trauma, a collective community trauma for the past year. And I think that we can easily throw around social, emotional learning ideas, but our teachers need hands-on training and hands-on tools that can be used in the classroom that need to be more than just one social, emotional learning day and it needs to be integrated into each school. And I would like to know what the district's plan is, a more detailed plan and how to support the students with their mental health.
Thank you. And we are hitting our last public speaker, Stacy. Your turn. And I don't see Stacy unmuting. So we have hit the end of public comment.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wolf. Thank you to everyone who called in and made comments this evening. We are now going to go. Let me start by saying, can I have a motion to ratify this tentative agreement with a clause at the beginning of the agreement section that says the preamble is not part of the agreement? Trustee Reckler?
I'll move that.
Thank you very much. Can I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded, so now it's on the floor. Now we are going to go to board discussion. Mr. Gonzalez Hoy is leading off tonight.
I wanted to start by, I'm going to make a short tonight because it's late and we had comments on Wednesday. I want to just say thank you to all the unions for bringing forward a new plan as well as staff who worked so hard this week to get us to this point and honestly, the last few weeks as well. I, you know, I do share a lot of concerns like the public did about the plan, the program. But I'm staying optimistic that this is going to support as many students as possible, especially our students with our highest needs and that need to come back to school. But I do see a lot of concerns and I hope that we can develop a very detailed plan that we can share with staff and families. I know that this is part of a larger journey and we're going to also offer more opportunities in the summer and opportunities in the fall. We have to do this right. One of the pieces I plan on doing is that I already scheduled with Mr. Freeze. One of the pieces I plan on doing is that I already scheduled with Mr. Freeze, a facilities walkthrough next week of all the schools in Area Four to ensure that they have all the safety equipment, the PPE, everything they need in order to reopen in the program that we're sharing right now. I want to ensure that our staff has everything they need in order to support our students as well as our students, all the safety equipment they need in order to come back. I'm gonna be voting yes on this stratification. I hope that we all do. I know that we all have concerns. But we have to work with our labor unions, our parents, our students to make sure that it's successful. And we have to move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, thank you very much. Mrs. Reckler?
Thank you. So I also want to thank all the negotiating teams. And I want you guys to know that I stayed up last night and waited for Marissa's email to come through and then I went to sleep. And I'm not saying this to curry favor or anything like that, but I knew that people were working all day on this. And I felt like in solidarity, I needed to be there while you were working it out. So thank you. I am, this is a humongous step forward. We, there are a lot of things to figure out. Of course, I wrote them all down and I'll, I'll encapsulate them and send them in, but I'm sure that Mr. Duffy and his staff have them, but I'll just follow up. There were a lot of good little comments in here that we do need to think about and of course, food. You know, it's, it's an issue for sure. So I'm thinking about that. I know we can do this. I know it's not going to be perfect, but I know we can rise and I'm excited and I believe in us and I'm glad we're here tonight. So let's make it happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Reckler. Mrs. Smith Folds?
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Education has historically been underfunded and fed trumps. If you have never experienced poor facilities, never been taught by exhausted teachers, never had to learn with outdated materials, never had to choose between feeding your family or buying art supplies for your class, count yourself as privileged. Most everyone comes out of the public education system bruised and harmed and most everyone chooses and most everyone who chooses to take part in the education of kids does so with good intentions. So why the pain in education? Why the mistrust? Because we don't value those who we trust to do the work. Things stay the same because the majority are willing to tolerate it. You have to fight for pure and actionable liberation. We must have a standard and expectation, a clear understanding and accountability that produces the work that we want. I believe the problem is that the majority of the voices at the decision-making table fall into one or two categories. It happened to me, so you can get through it like I did. Or I don't understand what you're talking about because I've never had experienced it. I'm calling for people who will say it happened to me and I'm working to change the system so it can't happen to you. Changing a system is more than interrupting it. It's breaking it and examining what parts of it are functioning and what parts just multiply the harm. Those who come in to voluntarily serve the most vulnerable and those historically neglected and marginalized must be compensated and valued. The fact that this is not happening is not a system change, it's the status quo. If you have to pay to get people to volunteer, then pay them. We must pay for the quality we want. We must pay for the standard we are requesting and we must stand up unapologetically and say no when employees are being devalued and taken advantage of. We have to answer to these questions. There is no trust when you keep telling the community, I don't know and I'm not sure. Get sure. The community needs to be clear about what you are saying you can do. Be clear with your capacity and your abilities. Tell the truth. Tell parents the truth. Tell teachers and staff the truth. The division is coming from one source, the source of not telling the truth. The truth is there is a difference between a plan and a proposal. A plan has details and answers. Y'all don't have a plan. You have a proposal. So here are some truths. Sites are not ready. CSOs will be leaned on. The truth is there will be more work for them. The truth is admin have not been given the time to plan this out to the best of their ability. The truth is the neediest students must be centered, but they're not. They're being overlooked. The truth is you cannot overwork our food service workers. The truth is adding snacks will overwork them. The truth is you cannot give sites responsibilities without resources and resources means money. You must hire counselors and psychologists. The truth is we don't have the counselors and the psychologists to help with all the trauma and social emotional needs that these kids are going to be come back with. The neediest kids will be coming back with. The truth is your child may not get back in. You need to understand that. The truth is that every site is, is, every site is ready. The truth is every site is ready. Every site is ready with everyone can see it on camera. So the truth is you need to go to every site. You need to show us that every site is ready. That's how you get the trust back. And the truth is frankly, if Kennedy and Richmond are ready, those of you who are choosing to show up in person, go show up to Kennedy and Richmond and have your board meeting. I'll still be on Zoom. The truth is our office managers are going to be overworked and our front office staff is going to be overworked. That's the truth. The truth is we have to bring back the people who do the work to the table to make sure that everything happens. That's the truth. I'm waiting for the truth and I'm tired of mediocrity. If it's not right, it's not right. If we not ready, we not ready. But you cannot bring the neediest students back to campus, the black and brown students back to campus. You can't tell people to come and do a job that you're not gonna pay them for and think that we are telling the truth to the community. You gotta stop lying.
Mrs. Smith Folds, does that conclude your comments?
Only if you wanted to, I could say more, but I'm gonna stop right there.
I know you can't and I don't want to cut you off. That's why I asked.
I'm finished. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Christian, you're next.
Thank you, President Phillips. We all been working hard, the staff. The five bargaining unions, everybody has been working diligently and hard. And to make sure that all things are done accordingly. I want to say is that we got to continue to build and knowing this is not perfect, but we got to continue to push forward. And think about the needs of our kids, helping our kids out and also and the needs of the staff and making sure that all the needs are being taken care of and making sure.
Trying to get to them.
Making sure that we can continue to see great days ahead of us. As tonight, you know, we just, we, we gonna push together. We gotta continue to work together as a team and seeing that we gotta stay together and get through these tough times. So we gonna push forward and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mrs. Millian.
I want to thank everyone who, as everyone else has, the unions and the school district staff for participating in these negotiations. I understand there has been a lot of work that's been done over the past couple of weeks. I just want to thank everyone for that as well as the community who has come tonight and the previous nights into the study sessions. There's been a lot of community members who have come and I would also like to say thank you to them. It's really important that when we go back to school, that people understand what's going on, what the plan is, is something that has been mentioned many, many times before and I just want to reiterate it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Leon?
Thank you, President Phillips. I want to start off by saying, by thanking the Board of Education for holding this meeting and parents, students and teachers for voicing their opinions. I would like to also state that we only get to experience our K through 12 education in our youth once in our lifetime. COVID has robbed our children and students of this once in a lifetime experience. As cases are declining and the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter, I am in full support of this plan to return to school. Zoom and remote education was designed as a temporary solution to serve our students. After a year, we can see that this education, education delivery method is not suffice and did not meet the demands for our students. From these meetings and discussions, I see that this plan takes into consideration of many of the community's concerns. Although the perfect solution does not exist, we are forced to make compromises. It is our job that these compromises do not negatively impact our students, teachers, parents and staff. Throughout this meeting, we have heard from a majority of parents, teachers and students voicing their support for this plan of returning to school. However, there are still uncertainties regarding this plan that I hope we can iron out to provide the best conditions for our students. I want to echo trustee Smith Folds' point for transparency and telling the truth. To conclude, I am in support for this plan and moving forward, I hope that this plan will be shared with everyone in our community and districts so that parents, students, teachers and staff are not caught by surprise so that we can prepare for this transition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon. First, I want to start by saying thank you to everyone who helped to get us here. At times, this has been a very bumpy process. At times, this has been a very rough process. I think during this process, feelings were hurt. Tempers at times rose. But at the end of the day, we're where we need to be, I believe. And it's because people worked through all of the negative that swirled around this issue. I want to let all of the staff know that I do care about you. I do care about your safety. I would not intentionally place you in harms way. My motivation this entire time has been about making things better for children. We have children who are hurting in so many different ways. We have children who are hurting academically. We have children who are hurting emotionally. We have children who are regressing. We have children who are being physically harmed. And frankly, in the community that I live in, and I know that we have a greater WCCUSD community that I'm a part of. But in the community that I live in, the area that I walk around, in the area that I do my profession in, that I practice law in, I have children that are going missing. And I don't mean missing as in they're not at the Zoom. I mean missing as in call the police. We don't know where they are. Some of these children are going missing during the time that they would normally be in school. So we all have different motivations and whatever those motivations are that bring us here or push us to do that work. Those motivations are to be honored and to be accepted because there is no other reason to do this work besides kids and they are kids who right now are not safe. This plan that we are proposing, in my opinion, it could go further. In my opinion, we should follow the guidelines that are put out by the state and federal government. But I don't get to create these things unilaterally. I don't get to create these things in a box. And I do believe that this is the best plan that we can pass today for this spring. And I believe that I have an obligation to do what I can to help the most children in the moment. Because I don't want my wife to tell me about one more kid that has gone missing during the school day. So I'm gonna vote for this. This evening. I'm gonna say thank you to Mr. Deleon for calling in. Hearing your voice made me feel better. I want to say thank you to Kristen personally for calling in. Hearing your voice made me feel better. It made me feel better because this has to be a partnership to work. And you are or represent rather some of our union partners. So thank you very much. It's 11:19. I see one more hand. Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, do you have additional comments?
Thank you, President Phillips. Yes, but I have a point of order on the motion. I want to make sure that it's legal and it's not going to turn around and we're gonna get a unfair labor practice for changing a document. So I was wondering if you could ask Superintendent Duffy or Dr. Wold about the legality of the motion.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, the motion. I don't have any questions about the motion. The motion is not illegal.
So then trustee, trustee, President Phillips, I would like to then make a new motion that we approve the document as is and ratify the MOU.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. And you're saying without the sentence?
Correct. As is.
It's been properly moved and seconded to not use that sentence. Onto the vote. Is there any more comment or discussion?
Are we both, excuse me, are we voting on not having that sentence in or are we voting on the entire TA right now?
We are just voting on the motion that Mr. Gonzalez Hoy just made.
Not to use the sentence. Okay, thank you.
Well, no. We are voting on what he just said.
Which is, so the, to, we're really voting on the TA without the sentence. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, just so we're clear, please repeat your motion.
I hope the secretary of the board wrote it as I said it, just to make sure I don't miss a word. My motion was that we ratify the MOU as is without changes.
Is everybody clear on what that motion is? Okay. So on to the vote, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Gonzalez Hoy, yes.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Chris, Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, no, for all the reasons stated previously.
Christian?
Yes.
Amelia?
Milliano, no.
Leon?
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you, everybody, for your work on this. It's now 11:22. We still have work to do, but I think we should take a break. So can I have a motion? So can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Can I have a motion to take a ten-minute break? Thank you, ma'am. Can I have a second? Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded for us to take a ten-minute break. On to the vote.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Milliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
You guys make it so much easier when I have to repeat your names. So I appreciate that. That just went so much quicker. So Phillips, yes. It's eleven twenty-three. I'm cheating. I will see you back at eleven thirty. Bye, all right? Thank you very much. All right, are we live? Am I just laughing into the, into the Zoom? Gotta laugh, gotta laugh. All right, do we have everybody back? We do. Okay. So we have finished our one action item for the evening. And now we have some consent items that were pulled, well, all three of them. So the first one is C one, new job description coordinator of African-American student achievement. Certificated. So I am going to ask, I assume the person is Mr. Aurelio. To present this job description. And then we are going to go into questions and then there was some public comment. And Saletta Hunter, who is the chair of our ASAT, is the person that pulled this item. So this wasn't pulled by a board member. So that said, Mr. Aurelio, do you want to?
Good evening, everyone. President Phillips, I've actually promoted to panelist director of our office of African-American student achievement. Will McGee and he will present the item.
Okay.
And actually will presenting both C one and C two.
Well, that's fine. I want to do them separately because they were pulled.
Yes, yes, separately.
Okay.
Perfect. So good evening, Board President, Honorable Board Member, Superintendent, Staff and Community. My name is William McGee, the Director of. The Office of African-American Student Achievement and we have tonight the. Position of the certificated coordinator. This is a position that has been in the works since I started in my position. We had engaged with the Executive Committee of the ASAT and then this is also taken from the resolution. To support Black and African-American students. And then we've also taken an input from the act, the African-American Parent Advisory Councils. So this position would be in line with the resolution and the office and then it would also. Support different things that the board has made as priorities such as our ethnic studies because this position will be working with the K-12. Academic team too.
Okay, Mr. McGee, thank you for being here. Is there anything else to this? That you want to say before the board starts asking you questions?
No, I, I mean, there's more things we could say, but I'll entertain board questions and they may come up as the board asks questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mister Gonzalez Hoid.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. McGee. Thank you for being here with us. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Reckler.
Good evening. No, I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Smith Folds.
Mister McGee, will having this position help you build out the Office of African-American, African-American Student Achievement?
Yes, this position will do that. This position is actually in the resolution that it calls for a position for student achievement.
Thank you very much. Small question.
Christian.
Yes, also just that, as this position is very vital for the movement of. For the African-American area can, so it can move forward.
Yeah, it is. And so one of the things that there were comments about was the salary and how this position was created. I, I as a director cannot set salary. Only the Board of Education can set salary. And so you guys have set the salary for all the positions in the district. So that was a misnomer in the community that I set the salary. So yeah, trustee Christian, to answer your question, that's exactly correct.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I have no questions.
And. Leon.
I have no questions either. Thank you.
Mister McGee, what is the issue with the salary?
Mister Phillips, I have no idea. I believe that what's been relayed is that. Me as the director has created this salary, my salary and other salaries. But as you know, and the board knows, the Board of Education is the. District that creates salaries. So I can't tell you anymore, Mister Phillips, than that this is a coordinator position. And the salary is established by you all as the Board of Education. Salary goes up every year. If there's a, and it looks like my internet is unstable. But the salary goes up every year for a cost of living allowance, and like I stated, you guys set the salary, Mr. Phillips.
Is this a bargain position? A bargain as in with the, the unions?
Yes, if I heard your question, Mr. Phillips, this is a bargain position. So, this would be in the West Contra Costa Administrators Association, WCCAA. The position went through them, the position went through HR, the position was presented to our African American side Advisory Team, Executive Committee on October 6th, November 16th, February 4th, March 16th of 21. And then we also had some Sunday dinners that we hosted where we all cooked our own dinner and then did Zoom. The position was presented at various Sunday dinners, as well as this position was presented at the ASAT meeting on October 20th, as well as it was reviewed from feedback from all of our ASAT members on the December 1st meeting, and the Board of Ed- up this position August 21st.
Okay, and being a bargain physician, and if you're not the person to answer this question, maybe the Superintendent or Mrs. Williams from HR or someone. But being a bargain position, is the salary the same salary that any other coordinator would get in any other department? Or is it out of line?
Um, I can answer that. So, yes, the coordinator would be the same, any other coordinator in that bargaining unit. And I think maybe the cost, it's not just salary. When they talk about the annual financial amount, it includes health benefits, payroll benefits. And so, that's why the cost may seem higher than just a salary.
Okay, so all of the benefits are added in. But Ms. Williams, the pay is the same as any other coordinator in the district. Okay, um, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, coordinator. There's a coordinator in SSA, and there's a coordinator in WCCAA. So, it's the same as WCCA coordinators.
Okay, got it. Um, Mr. McGee, can you speak a little more about what this position actually is going to do? I know it's gonna support student achievement. You said that, but can you break that down for us laypeople?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this position is in line with the Resolution that the Board passed to support black students in our district. The Board has prioritized black student achievement. This position will do some data analysis. The position will also look at the Ethnic Studies Department that the Board is interested in exploring. The position won't have direct oversight of it, but it will help with the K-12 instruction. We're also looking at this position conducting some training. As we are going through the Resolution, Mr. Phillips, Board and Superintendent, we're identifying areas in the Resolution that we need to address, and we are hoping that we can work with the ASAT Committee on the Resolution Items. So, again, the, um, the Resolution calls for intervention specialist. And so, we've been discussing, and we would like to discuss with the ASAT as a whole, about reading specialist and math specialist. Ms. Williams was great, and she identified people in the district who have a reading specialist credential. So, what we want to do, Mr. Phillips and Board, is look at, do we bring in reading specialist? And then this certificated coordinator helps with that training, helps with the designing programs at the various school sites, so that we can address the achievement in reading and math for our black students. And there's a, a plan that we are discussing as the team, which we've already sought feedback from the ASAT as a whole. We're seeking more feedback, and then when we get more feedback, we would love to work with the Executive Committee and the District on that plan. Um, other things that this position will do, Board, will be to really support the school sites on education, to give training. We're hope, oh, and you know what I meant to say, excuse me, Mr. Phillips and Board. The district was so great in its commitment to black students that they allowed for this new position to be tailored to black students. So, as Ms. Williams stated, there's a general coordinator of education services. But the school district said, we want a coordinator of black student achievement. So, when you look at this job description, it differs. It takes language from the Resolution. It takes language from our parents, and it says, we are looking for somebody that specializes in curriculum for black students. We're looking at somebody who is trained with that type of pedagogy. So, um, hopefully that answers your question, but this is very specific to black students, which is a very big leap that this district has taken, and we're hoping that the Board will support this.
Sorry, I was on mute. Does the job description catch someone with the qualifications needed to do all of this stuff that you're talking about?
Mr. Phillips, if you guys give me a moment, I want to repull the job description up to point that out. Yeah, so if you look at major duties and responsibilities, the second bullet point where it states coordinate and assist school sites in developing activities for families to support the district's program for African American black students. That's a very big step for our district, because we've never called that out before. Bullet point number four, same thing. It talks about programs relating to African American black student achievement. This is what our whole community has been asking for, is that type of care and concern. Um, there's other areas, Mr. Phillips and Board, like bullet point seven, if I can count, that talks about development and professional development as it relates to meeting the unique needs of African American black students. If the Board approves this tonight, we'll be one of the very few districts that is really calling out the need to strengthen supports for black students under qualifications. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak. It does talk about being able to work with the diverse community group. This is language taken from the Resolution that you guys approved in January 2020. This is also language that our black parents have overwhelmingly given the OASIA feedback on. So, to go back to your question, Mr. Phillips, yes, if you guys support us and approve this job description, this will allow us to look with, for somebody with specific skills that help black children and black employees and black families.
Is this the person that will work on developing a master plan for African American students?
This person will assist with that, yes.
Who will he or she be assisting?
Me, the district, yes. Because as you know, um, as Mr. Aurelio raises his hand, um, there are a lot of meetings that we're sitting in. Uh, we do have a strategic three-year plan that we would love to get back to work on. But we've been distracted from that because of other items. So, this person will assist with this three-year plan, and then they will also assist with implementing it. Our school sites are asking for support, and with what we have in the department right now, we're not able to support the school sites the way we want to. This position will assist with that, but there are also other positions that will help with the build out.
But assist with, uh, master plan for African American students?
That, the training, the professional development, the coordinating of what the sites need, yes. And right now, our sites are asking for ideas and strategies to work with, uh, black children for the spring return, for summer session as well as fall. And ideally, this position will help with that, and timing is paramount, as you all may know. Right now, the more effective people are looking for jobs. If this position is not approved and publicized, and we wait until May or June, then we're not going to get the highest qualified candidates.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't have any other questions. Folks in TV land, we're about to go to public comment, so raise your hand if you have something to say. I see two hands raised now, but if other people, uh, have something to say, please raise your hand, because once we go to public comment, um, that's it. Uh, so we have five hands raised, uh, going once, going twice, gone, five hands.
Okay, first one is Zalon Harrison.
My question is, you guys just heard all that, and the questions the Board asked. This person and with all the other people in the office, um, we don't win darts at the Resolution and saying they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that. The Resolution was clearly written with job descriptions in it. Why does nobody in the office line up to those job descriptions clearly? And then in those job descriptions, they can do things out of the Resolution. Why are their jobs lined up to pieces of the Resolution with no clear job descriptions from the ones that were written in the Resolution? That's chaos. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Asato Wilson. May I mute?
Hello again, and good evening. So, I'm gonna touch upon what I hinted at earlier about race and equity. So, the district, I assume, is gonna support this, um, the job description and whatnot. But is the district fully gonna support OASIA? And the reason why I ask is because the district has done a very poor job at supporting anything regarding black academia, black education, black educators, and of course, black students. So, with all of us that are stepping forward and actually working to make change and do the best we can, so folks like Will McGee and all the other brothers and sisters in our district, what is the district gonna do to ensure that this is taken care of and that this is not just flavor of the month? At this point, we still not sure what's going on with race and equity, like, as a district as a whole, because just, it still wasn't clear, because this is something the district started talking about in the fall. There's been some success at other sites, but again, what is the district going to do about supporting this? You just can't sit there and sign a resolution saying we support black people. If you're not black, then you need to get up and actually stand behind what you are saying and support your black educators. If you support your black educators, then our black educators can support our black students. And then we support our black students, we can support everyone. So, that's my concern. And until I hear something from the school board, I will be speaking on this every week. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Saletta Hunter. May I mute?
Thank you, Board and President. I know it's been a long night. Um, I think it was spoke, it was mentioned about costs. I don't think cost was really one of the major issues, even though we heard Monday that we don't have any more money in our budget because we're filling these positions. Um, the thing that most concerned us was lining up with the Resolution. It was explained now, but it hasn't been explained to us. And all the meeting dates that were given, this coordinator position was never discussed or created with ASAT. So, the naming of us and saying that we participated is not true. In our Resolution, it says that this office should be designed in partnership with us and under the guidance of ASAT's Executive Committee. That hasn't happened in any of these positions, except the Directors, which was created by us. And the direct staff, the district staffs should develop and implement a process to partner with ASAT. That's not happening. So, the reason why we're bringing this up is that you're not including parents in the conversation. You're telling us that if you have to report to us, it's going to be a problem, and that you don't think that that's necessary, and that things are just gonna happen the way they happen. But we're not gonna stand up and take that. If the Resolution says that you need to include parents, then you need to include parents. Not cherry picking parents, not going to APACs and finding parents who agree with you, but actually finding the parents who are out here in this work and on your executive board to agree with this. The policy of the, uh, WCCUSD also states, according to the, uh, Education Code, that it's important to include the parents for academic achievement. Educational research shows that. So, why do you keep passing us by and telling us that we're not importing and trying to block us when we're trying to do work with the district by shutting down on us and not wanting to meet with us? That's not the way a partnership works. We would love to partner with you, but we need to understand how pieces of the puzzle like this job description work. Don't know that. I'm sorry, Dr. Woke, go ahead.
Uh, we're, we're at time. Thank you for your comments. Our, our next comment is Jose De Leon. You may unmute.
Uh, good evening, Board Superintendent, uh, Mr. McGee. Uh, just to reiterate, um, uh, this would be a new, new position to the Administration, um, Association. Really appreciate that a certificated teacher or administrator will be part and working on ethnic history, uh, part. I think it's, uh, very valuable, and it will help our students in the long run. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. McGee, for continuing to work, uh, with the Resolution to bring more programs to our students. Thank you.
Our last public comment on this is C Peters.
Hello, my name is Carol Peters. I am a teacher, um, in Hercules. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I do believe that this Resolution was a passed, this Resolution was passed a year ago. It is very disappointing that the Board, um, the previous Board and the current has not done what is necessary to properly implement this, uh, Resolution. The fact that, um, I'm looking at the Resolution right now, and, um, Part B, there further be resolved. The, the Oasis is supposed to have many positions that are supposed to be functioning in order to properly implement this Resolution, and that hasn't happened. And the fact that this matter has been pulled and it's been delayed for as long as it has been, it's showing that maybe seeing a successful OASIA is not the priority of the Board, and that's very disappointing. As a member of an APAC, I am not invited to these Executive Committee meetings. I haven't seen any minutes from them. I haven't seen any type of, um, communication from ASAT, and that is concerning, but that is in-house, and we can deal with that later. Oasis needs to have these positions, and the district needs to prioritize that and make sure that this office can operate properly. We are on our second Director in less than a year, and that is saying much. So, be better, do better, and implement this Resolution as it is written. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go on to Board Discussion. Gonzalez, why?
Um, President Phillips, I, I, I feel kind of a little lost behind all this. I, it's new information for me mostly. Um, so, uh, I'm not sure if you're looking for a motion, but I, I, I won't be, I'll follow up the lead of, uh, our, maybe our ASAT, um, liaison on this one. Thank you.
No problem. No problem at all, sir. Um, well, you know what? I will just ask for a motion. Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this was moved by Smith Folds and seconded by Mr. O3 Christian. Um, Mr. Gonzalez, why you don't have any discussion now?
No, I don't have any discussion. I'll be voting yes, but no discussion. Thank you.
Reckler, any discussion?
No, none. Thank you.
Okay, um, Smith Folds?
I think it's imperative that we give people the resources and the needs and meet the needs to actually work for the, the students that we are required to work for. So, I will vote yes, because the office deserves to be built out, so the Resolution can be implemented. We have to do what we said we were going to do. We have to provide the resources that we said we are gonna provide to service the children that we said that we're going to focus on for the need in the service.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Christian, any discussion?
Um, thank you, President Phillips. I'd like to say, I, I, I agree. You know, we had to provide the needs, uh, making sure that, uh, this can function. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have a few things that I want to say. Um, clearly, the issue is larger than this one position. I believe that it would be beneficial, uh, for us to, and I think trustee Reckler has already started this process, but I believe it would be beneficial for, uh, the Budget Committee to actually have a discussion around the past budget, uh, where, uh, members of ASAT and the APACs are able to come, get information, uh, and get, uh, questions answered, uh, because this is an ongoing, uh, issue. Um, and if we're gonna pull this thing off, we really need to be pushing, uh, in the same direction. Uh, and I know that that's what people, uh, really want to do. So, I, I do want to see this get onto the Committee, uh, Budget Committee agenda around the past budget. That's one. Um, the second thing is, uh, Mr. McGee, uh, and Ms. Hunter, I would like to take both of you to lunch, even if it's a virtual lunch. Um, but I would like to just chat, uh, with you all. Um, I think that, uh, we have a lot of, of, of good energy. I think we have, uh, people with, uh, big hearts. Uh, and I think that, uh, we want to see, um, our African American students succeed. Um, and, you know, I, I think it'd be good for us to just get, to just get together and, and have some lunch socially distanced outside, uh, so we could, you know, start moving past some of this stuff. start moving past some of this stuff. As far as the position is concerned, Mr. McGee, you did speak about how it lines up with the resolution. And I heard some of the people who called in say that they want more information and that they didn't receive information. So we do need to clarify, you know, some of that. But one of the things in that position description is, you know, other duties. I'm reading it now. Perform other duties as assigned. So what Mr. McGee, you just spoke about does not have to be the entirety of what this person does. So there are some other things that need to be done that could be spoken about as well, because the resolution that was passed is important. And we do want to, you know, honor the resolution. But we do want to make sure that we are working in partnership with our parents. That's extremely important. And I don't think that Mr. McGee is doing this, but we do have to understand just because we are the same ethnicity as the parents, that doesn't mean that we don't need to include or involve the parents. And I know that's not what Mr. McGee is doing. But I think us having a lunch and just sitting down and talking and breaking bread would be very helpful. So I'll be reaching out, so we can do that. So that said, it's been moved. It's been seconded. We're going to go on to the vote. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And Smith Folds?
Um, if you have that virtual lunch, invite me as a liaison. I want to be there, only virtually, but Smith Folds, yes.
Christian is next.
Christian, yes.
Okay, and Leon is next.
Leon, yes.
Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Phillips is yes. All right, we're going to go on to the next one. Thank you, Mr. Aurelio.
May I start?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay. So thank you again, Board. So this next position is a new position. And so I will definitely accept Mr. Phillips's invitation to lunch if my supervisors approve it, as long as he knows that I will eat and get some lobster. This next position, though, is similar, and I do want to talk a little bit about some of the comments. And so we are striving to do a partnership, Mr. Phillips. And unfortunately, because we have not done an effective job as a district to support our black families, our black children, and our black employees, we are not able to really have a fruit anymore. The partnership is there, and what I want to say is that we do, we do have some stuff that we have to work out as a district. Mr. Aurelio and Ms. Smith Folds have really taken the lead, and I believe that we had a fruitful discussion today. So when you hear people say that we're cherry picking or we're not including parents, that's just not accurate. We are talking to the executive committee. We are presenting things. And at times, we may not go into details, but we do have the information. I do understand too that the board also wants to include a large subset of our families. Right now, as of Power School, we have forty seven hundred and fifty-two black children identified, and that does not encompass the children who are mixed with black. So this next position is a position that gives our sites a lot of flexibility and autonomy. This is again a bargained position because it took so long. I told Ms. Williams, forget it. We can't use it anymore, Ms. Williams. This actually goes with our program for academic support. So I'm happy to say we have about ten teachers right now supporting students, where now our families are saying, why does my child have to be out of this program? Because support slash intervention. So the idea was that this classified position will work hand in hand with our certificated folk and then be working with children on reading skills and supporting them and encouraging them to go. We have been talking with Contra Costa College, and we are now trying to bridge a gap between our graduates from WCCUSD and who can come back and then so this position again does speak to the resolution. The resolution is included in the language. We did seek feedback from the executive committee as well as other black parents, and that's shown through a padlet that we've used to get voice. This position is also something that's able to be used by school sites, because school sites will have the opportunity to hire college-age students and even higher, and they can work up to fifteen hours per week. The salary is something that's negotiated. Ms. Williams took her time and care with the Teamsters, and they looked at it and they reviewed it. And I think the other thing I was going to say is that, again, this is a pivotal position, because in the job description, we are looking for people who are geared toward black students, black families. We're not just looking for, you know, the regular person, but we are looking for somebody who specializes in this. And then this is also a potential pathway to becoming a teacher in our district. That's something else that Ms. Williams was able to look at. And working with her and Mr. Scott, Dr. Greenwood and Dr. Scott in Human Resources, this is something that is really pivotal. And so Dr. Scott and I spent about forty-five minutes to an hour. She gave me feedback. We looked at the resolution. We looked at feedback from our black families. And that's how we crafted the job description. And then again, as Ms. Williams may tell you, if you guys ask her, she then had to go and talk with the Teamsters, and now we're asking for the board to support. Again, this is a position that our entire district may use, and then we have the flexibility to use it during the day. And I think as I wrap up, there are opportunities to partner with all the colleges in our area. And depending on if we're doing virtual things, there's that flexibility too.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGee. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, you're kicking it off.
Thank you, President Phillips. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Reckler?
No questions for me either. Thank you.
Smith Folds?
No questions. Thank you.
Christian?
No question.
All right, folks who want to say something for public comment, please raise your hand, okay? Because it's coming up pretty quickly. Ms. Emiliano?
No questions. Thank you.
Leon?
No questions. Thank you.
I have one question. Why are, can you help me understand why both of these positions are needed?
Yeah, so in the resolution to support black students, it talks about the academic achievement. And so one of the things that this would do is allow for us to do small group instruction. We were talking today in a meeting about how teachers can utilize this support. And so if Mr. Christian is the teacher on record, and then Mr. Gonzalez Hoi is the academic support provider, Mr. Christian can say, hey, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, please take these five children and work with them in this way. So it allows for more one-to-one interaction and one-to-one tutoring and one-to-one academic mentoring as well. As you know, we pulled the data, the star reading data. And so our program, we tiered it, and we identified one thousand children who were in need of academic support. Unfortunately, we were only able to work with fifty of them. And so this position would have allowed us to work with more. So that's why this position is needed, as well as school sites, when they did see it on the agenda, they were excited because this was also giving them the opportunity to have flexibility with who they can hire.
How many? How many positions? I mean, I get it, it's one position, but how many people are we looking to hire to fill this position?
Look, as many as the budget can sustain. And I think what I would say is the idea is also to do training monthly with these folk in this position. The Director of Positive School Climate has a plan in regard to training on the social emotional. We're going to have the plan in regard to training on the culturally relevant. When you ask how many, Mr. Phillips, as many as the budget can sustain, and then as many as we can recruit. Like I stated, there's already a partnership with Contra Costa College, and they sent five names. They were like, we have some tutors ready to go. The other thing that this could be pivotal, pivotable, or whatever word I'm trying to say, excuse me, at midnight, this can be really game-changing, you all, because I've also asked Contra Costa College, how can this be a class that students at that college can register to be in? Academic support provider that they meet with the teacher from Contra Costa College every two weeks? Plus, they're getting our training will light up the pathway for us to recruit teachers. So to go back to your question, Mr. Phillips, as many as we can get.
Can you give me an estimate?
Let's say a hundred.
Is that a real estimate? Because you just looked into the sky.
Asking a question, and I'm not taking any slow pitches. I'm telling you, let's say a hundred. And honestly, Mr. Phillips, I mean, if you think about it, we'll have three hundred and eighty-seven black graduates from our district this year. If a lot of them go to Contra Costa College, UC Berkeley, and then they pass the test that they have to pass with Ms. Williams and her department, because they wouldn't have enough units, we would love to recruit all of them, and this would be another way for them to work themselves through college with hopefully having a love of teaching. So to be real with you, yeah, if we can get a hundred, we will get it. We're going to be advertising, and like I said, just on the word, Contra Costa College was able to come up with five people.
Let me ask you this. Is this basically a grad tutor position? I mean, I know that the qualifications are not the same, but is this essentially a grad tutor position?
I would say no, but I think I would have to ask Ms. Williams to answer that question for you, but
So it doesn't have the same amount of hours. Obviously, they're providing academic support, and that was one of the conversations we have with Teamsters, that, you know, we would check with them about if anybody was interested and able to do that. But it's similar, just because it's, but they're not graduated. And we need to pass a paraprofessional test or have forty-eight units of college level.
Okay, it's similar to the grad tutor position, but focused on a particular population, which the grad tutors were really focused on a particular population as well.
And I think, is it too that this position, Ms. Williams, as you stated, is it different that it could take a freshman in college if they pass a paraprofessional test where the grad tutor position couldn't? And I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
A grad tutor, again, they have a degree, which is a little different. So yes, you could do a freshman, but they do have to pass a paraprofessional test.
And so, Mr. Phillips, in that way, this is, to me, different, because we're able to now capture, like I said, freshmen in college, just fresh graduates from our district, as long as they pass that test, and then they do our monthly trainings.
Yeah, the qualifications are different, but it's the same job. Oh, I'm done. I'm sorry. I'm starting to talk now. We're going to go to public comment. We got three hands up. So let's do it.
Okay, we have four hands. Our first one is Zalon Harrison.
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Phillips. You almost made me forget we was in a board meeting. So thank you for reminding me while we're here. And this is something that we do need to definitely address and work out, and I know where the confusion lies. And it's definitely not, I feel, with the people who are speaking tonight. I want this to be not a repeat and a constant come to. And I appreciate how everybody is conducting this fragile matter, because it's very important. And I think that we're going to get to a common goal, no matter how it looks to others. It'll come. We're going to get this done. And thank you. And I'm going to bed.
Okay, our next public speaker is Selena Hunter.
I am also going to bed after this. I just want to note that we get a minute and thirty seconds to sit up here as parents in a group and talk, and the district gets countless amount of time to explain stuff. But I will just go back to parent involvement. It sounds real good and glossy tonight, and I love that these things are happening. And now that I hear them, and I know what they are, and I understand them, and I see the job description, I get it. I only wish that we had an opportunity to work and do this with OASIA and that we get that opportunity in the future, and I know that it will work out. I will also say too that the people who comment that I hear usually either work for the district or they have some affiliation with our budget, and so I understand where that is coming from. ASAT is here. We do have meetings. Our next general meeting is on the twentieth of April, and we invite everyone to come out at six o'clock to sit in our meetings and hear the discussions that we have. I thank everybody for their time tonight, and I appreciate everything that has been done. Good night. Thank you. Parent involvement, don't forget us. We're out here working hard, fighting your district, because they don't care about black people. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Deborah. May I unmute?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for the endurance you've shown in still being here at this hour. I am a member of the ASAT Executive Board, and I think that what's been proposed is definitely needed to ensure African American achievement. I think the concern that a lot of ASAT members have had has been about the issue of partnership. So I want to suggest that what we've done tonight is approved the job descriptions, which I think are great. And I want to propose that the board find a method to make sure that ASAT is able to be in partnership with Oasis and actually agreeing on who the candidate or who the actual people will be to fill this position. And on a site level, it can be done through the ASAT reps. And on the major issues, it can be done through the executive committee. But I think if that's done in partnership, that it will go a long way towards healing whatever risks that involve. And also, I want to say, I'm a transplanted New Yorker, and I'm the product of a system where communities fought for and got community control and input. And while a lot of people had issues with it at the beginning, it worked out to be a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
And our last public speaker is Sada Wilson.
Hello. So this is an example of what some of my fellow educators pointed out earlier this evening and previous board meetings as whatnot, is that if you had standing reports, I do recall that ASAT was one of the folks that had a standing report to actually speak on what they were working on. This would give opportunity for OASIA, along with all the labor teams and groups and whatnot to speak, also adding to that list of Black Educative Network as well. There were some in our school were meeting longer than a minute and thirty seconds, then we would actually be able to get more information out to the public, so that way the community has a better idea of what's going on. A minute and thirty seconds is not going to cut it. Bottom line, if that's not going to change, then there needs to be availability on how each group about the situation needs to make a presentation, and that needs to be transparent and accessible on how to schedule it, how to share the slides, who to talk to, because that's not available for everybody. But again, if there was more information presented about this earlier, as we move throughout this semester, then I think there would be better understanding. So again, we have more time for standing reports and allow all these other folks, as I've said before at previous school board meetings, help the knelt and bolts and the foundation to actually run our sites, then this would be a little bit more clearer. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We're going to go on to board discussion. Board, we have this another item, and then we have to go back to closed section, and we have about forty minutes to complete everything. So, Mrs. Smith Folds, you have your hand raised? I mean, I was looking at you. Your hand was raised.
I was scratching. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Phillips. I would just like to make a motion to approve this position.
Okay, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion? Looking at everybody, no discussion. I have one comment, and this is to Mr. McGee and his supervisor. Mr. McGee, I hope your supervisor lets you come to lunch with me, so I don't have to say bad things in the open meeting.
I was hoping for that invite too, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Aurelio, you could come too. Yeah, because some things just don't need to be said on TV. So I hope we get that together. That said, let's vote. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
And Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
And Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
It was faster when you guys were saying your names on your own. Christian?
Christian, yes.
Emiliano?
Emiliano, yes.
Leon?
Leon, yes.
Phillips is a yes. Thank you so much, everybody. All right, Dr. Woak, item C three.
Thank you. So as we pass the Thank you. So as we pass the MOU tonight, one of the provisions is for testing. We put together this item and we were grabbing as many different vendors as we could to get it put together. We have five in there. As we look at it, we also didn't quite have a correct number, so I'm gonna recommend that. We approve four vendors to start as we begin. We wanna have a couple options to make sure that we test them out. So we can just go for the first four and then approve authorization to spend up to half a million for this round. If we end up getting close to that, I'll come back for a second um, round. And as we continue to determine which vendors work the best for our school district, we will be able to make the right choices. We wanna have both the rapid testing for very specific purposes, as well as the normal ongoing testing for asymptomatic testing. So the, the recommendation would be that we approve four, four vendors, so that we can move forward with that. And that we also um, approve a spending authority of half a million to begin. And then I'll come back if we get close to that, to get an authorized continued, and if we can add more vendors, I'll bring another four. So that we have lots of options.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wolf. Board, any questions? Mister Gonzalez, see you.
Thank you, uh, President Phillips. Dr. Wolf, um, do you believe it's critical that we have to um, approve this tonight?
Believe that it is one of those things that we can continue to research the vendors. These are the, these are the five that I've been able to look at. I've started to look pretty deep at it and I felt all of them are very viable. I have not done formal pieces. We can test them out and bring it back on the fourteenth as well. After we've tested a couple of these, we can do a small sampling. And then bring the entire item back with more detail. That would be very acceptable as well.
So if we approve this, these contracts with the four vendors you're talking about, um, the testing would begin. As soon as we start bringing students and staff back?
Correct. We anticipate that we would do testing either the end of the first week or the beginning of the second week of all staff. And students returning, so that would be the week of the nineteenth of April. We are doing some very small scale testing, and we've tried out one lab so far with athletics. That was paid for by the state, but we're going to be moving with some indoor athletics that we're gonna continue testing. Because of the proximity piece to make sure, and that will be on our cost. So we'll be looking at trying out several vendors.
And my last question, uh, you found these vendors by looking at other districts and looking through California, okay?
Correct, um, that, this is very much, there's quite a few, and, and the big thing is because there are so many. And there's so many that are doing it, you wanna try to find one that's the most responsive to you, which is why I'm bringing so many. Because you don't wanna be in one contract with one vendor and not be able to really have good service. And so I, I would like to, when we're said and done, have eight to ten options, just like we do in legal, where we can. Ensure that we have the right service at the right time immediately, cause we're, we're talking about student safety and staff safety here.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wolf. President Phillips, that was my last question.
Okay, thank you. Reckler?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mister Phillips, may I go?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Wolf, are they specific to working with elementary students, the vendor?
No, most there, I have not found one that I could tell you is specifically focused on elementary students. So that's part of going and looking at each of these. This is a very new industry. So you haven't had people specialized at that level yet. They, they state that they can and they do serve elementary students. But there isn't a specialty.
Me, well, they do, uh, that's what I mean when I say specialty, they do work with elementary school students. They understand, they understand the psychology of elementary school students.
Yes, yes, the, the whole fear, the whole different pieces when you're doing the swabs. And many of them, we're trying to get the ones that don't do the deep nasal swabs, but do just the closer, so that it's not as uncomfortable. When they do the testing.
Okay, that's what I meant. Thank you for that. And then they are the ones that are going to come to the sites. And they are the ones that are gonna do the testing, and you have enough that are gonna cover all the sites that you're opening.
That's why I wanna get up to eight or more, so that we always have options if we run low on capacity. So that, these were the first five that we found that were ready to ra- ramp up. We would start each one with a pilot, make sure that they're effective, and then continue to expand them. That's why this is a different type of authorization than I normally do. I do a single source contract, we do the bed, we go. Here, this is about rapid turnaround and safety, and all five of these, I've vetted that they are working with other districts. They're reputable companies I feel good with, but I also feel that we can start with four pilot, do another group, so.
And they'll be assigned to one site. They won't be moving from site to site to site to site to site, correct?
That would be the ideal, is to get them on a preferred schedule, so that we don't have to ja- jump around.
Guys, and I hate to be rude, and I know somebody's gonna say something about me online. But we have to get out of the meeting at thirty minutes, and we still have to go back to closed session.
Doctor Wolf, will there be a way for you to bring this back with more detail and be able to answer more questions? Okay.
Sure, certainly, we can do that. I can just continue piloting and bring it back on the fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith Folds. Um, Mister Christian, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, um, anybody who has um, public comment, raise your hands. Uh, Emiliano, questions?
Questions, thank you.
Uh, Leon, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment?
There is one public comment, Mariela Cuellar, you may unmute.
Good morning. I just, um, I, I have so many questions. Um, but I'm gonna start, is this testing is for um, only for spring? Or it's gonna go throughout the, the summer and fall and in the future? And is the parents are gonna know, I'm guessing, yes, right? That you're gonna communicate this to the parents, and how often are these tests are gonna be done? And also is this um, gonna apply for teachers, other staff? Um, how, how is this gonna be look like? Um, and I don't know why, um, I mean, the. I have, I have medical, so, cause I'm a part-time. I don't have uh, health insurance through the district. Um, but when I go to the, to take the test, I have taken three tests already. And obviously it's covered by my, my ins- by mi- my medical, the Contra Costa health plan. So I don't know how, that I heard half a million dollars that it's gonna be allocated for this. Um, testing, and there're gonna be multiple um, vendors. Uh, I just, uh, uh, for me, that's a lot of money that we. And it's necessary. I know it's necessary, cause we need to be safe. But I, I, I think that, that money can be used for other things too.
Thank you, that, that would be time. Thank you. That's it for the public comment.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the first four vendors with a five hundred thousand dollar spending limit? Initial five hundred thousand dollar spending. Can I have a second, please?
Thank you.
It's been moved by Gonzalez Boy, seconded by Christian, uh, onto the motion. Uh, any discussion? None, thank you. Uh, onto the motion, Gonzalez Boy.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
You guys just say your names, I'm tired, please.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes, with the thing that you're coming back to talk to us with more questions. Thank you.
Christian, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes. Thank you, everybody. That is the last item on the agenda. We need to go back uh, to closed session. Um, we are going back to closed session for one item, which is public employee appointment. Uh, can I have a motion to please adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
I can.
It's been moved by Gonzalez, seconded by Smith Folds, uh, onto the vote. Please say your names.
Gonzalez, oh, yes. Uh, just for the minutes, it was the other way around. I apologize, President Phillips. Uh, Miss, uh, Trustee Smith Folds made the motion, I seconded it, but Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Emiliano, yes.
Leon, yes.
Phillips, yes, um. Emiliano and Leon, you are free. You are free. Uh, we will see you next time, but we're going back in the closed session. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay.